Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our three of the whole meeting on Monday, March the 22nd. I will call this meeting to order and we'll do, it's not on the agenda, but it will do our roll call first. Counselor Foster.
Present, sir.
Counselor Van Leeuwen.
Present.
Counselor McElwain.
Present.
Counselor Kittredge.
Present.
Counselor Dunsmore.
Present.
Counselor McCray.
Here.
We're all here and we can all hear each other, so that's a good start. Ask if there's any disclosure of pecuniary interest with anything on the agenda today? Okay, seeing none, the first presentation that we have is from our president and CEO, Stephen Street, and I know you've brought some of your folks here, Stephen. So thanks very much for agreeing to join our meeting today. And if you could introduce the team that you brought, that'd be great. Over to you, Steve.
Great, thank you very much and thank you everyone for having us today. I've invited with me a couple of key individuals who've been leading our pandemic response for our community through our clinical services. With me today is Jill Skatka, she's our vice president and chief nursing executive of the Wellington Healthcare Alliance. And also I have Becky, Rebecca Stewart, who is our director of quality and patient safety. She's been our primary liaison with public health. And then along with our two chiefs of staff have been keeping our hospitals operating through this last year during our pandemic. So we do have a slide deck and I don't know if, if you would be able to pull that up. Thank you very much. And then next slide, please. Really the objectives, what we wanted to do today, a year in, is to outline what the impacts of COVID-19 has had on our hospital operations through our first two waves. Also to review what the provincial, local and regional response has been. And there's a lot of information that we'd like to share just in terms of what's been guiding some of the decisions that we've been making. Want to look at what we think the current and future impact on health resources are going to be. And then what the third wave is going to look like and what's causing us some concern and what planning that we're doing in behind the scenes. And then just a very brief update on vaccinations and then to provide an opportunity for any questions or discussion that may follow. So if I could ask you to advance the third slide and then I will turn it over to Jill Skatka, who will guide us to what our last year has looked like. And Jill came on board about a week before the pandemic was formally declared, I think. And that's been our primary role, Joe.
Okay, hello, everyone. Hope you can hear me okay there. So speaking of, and thanks Steve for that. I'm welcome and thanks for letting me join you today. So our pandemic response and you can advance to the third slide. Please, thank you so much. So we really have a lot of guidelines and frameworks that we have to work under as sent by Ontario Health and by the Ministry of Health and different Wellington, Duffering, Guelph Public Health Guidelines. But three of our main guiding frameworks through the scenario of COVID have been these Ontario COVID Response Framework, which does guide us through a lot of the public health measures based on how we can help with community transmission and mitigating that. On the Ontario Health Optimizing Care Through COVID-19 Transmission Scenarios. And this is very helpful and useful for how we guide and scale up and down our responses regionally, locally, and in how we deliver service through COVID and in trying to mitigate transmissions. And as well in the Ontario Health West Regional Testing Advisory Committee Recommendations and how we can also work with testing or guiding patients and services through the COVID and the different phases of lockdown and all the different scenarios we have to work under. Our ultimate goal, of course, is to find the balance between how do we maintain services? How do we create system capacity when needed, ramping up or down? And how do we minimize disruption to service? And get through service backlogs that have impacted care through COVID. Next slide, please. So some of the hospital service impacts that you might have heard or seen or experienced through wave one and two. We did have to temporarily close and shut down some non urgent surgical services and diagnostic procedures. And that did start in March of 2020 with the initial request by the ministry to stop all non urgent procedures. And that has created a backlog in the system. We did also work to reduce hospital traffic by restricting the amount of volunteers, reducing visiting hours that align with the provincial and regional direction and the situational reports that we receive almost daily from the ministry. In the emergency department, and you've probably heard this, in the initial phases of COVID, there was an actual emergency avoidance. It seemed that people just weren't coming to the ED and volumes did go down initially. However, now we're finding that we've bounced right back up to pre-COVID levels, which is fine because we do want to be available to serve the community. However, the patients that are coming now are actually higher acuity, more ill, more unwell, maybe waiting to not try and come. And so that is requiring more resources. We have stricter isolation precautions related to suspected COVID. And that does also increase length of stay of patients in the emergency department, both non admitted and admitted populations. The increased length of stay also has impacted mental health everywhere, not just in our community, but in our region, which has put increased pressures on all emergency departments in our region and also has created quite a backlog of services for the stream of patients. As well, our alternate level of care patients, so those that don't require acute care, but maybe in hospital, also are impacted with having longer stays in hospital due to both the loss of long-term beds provincially and having to reduce in some of our hospital sites to, from semi and ward rooms down to single patient rooms. Facility outbreaks also impact the ability to transfer patients back to long-term care or to other hospital sites. And delays also for patients to return to their residences due to trying to streamline services with home community care. We also have had service impacts related to deploying staff to work in assessment centers, which we have set up in our area for our community to support vaccination clinics and also to help our partners in managing community congregate care settings, which has further strained our hospital resources. Next slide, please. The other factor here is we do and are part of a regional health system response, which is the incident management system structure that we are in partnership with our Waterloo Wellington Hospitals. And this is guided by the OH West formerly, well, it's actually all of Southwest Ontario now as a community. And it is a single decision-making body that we work together with the Waterloo Wellington Command Triad, which consists of public health, Ontario Health Hospitals and home and community care. And our goal is to actually be available to monitor and respond to critical capacity situations in our hospital so that we can respond in real time. And some of the areas that are impacted are intensive care, surgical services, diagnostic services. We work together to provide necessary direction and decision-making so we can facilitate response using movement of staff, how do we move patients? Can we move equipment across sites? What does that look like for staff training? Supplies is also a big part that we focus on in order to ensure we all have the right supplies based on the needs of our populations. And public or the IMS system also does help in how do we deploy regionally resources if there was an outbreak as well at either a hospital site or at a congregant care site. Next slide, please. So the other piece that we're working on and takes a lot of our energy right now is in patient service transfers and trying to ensure that we have capacity in the system. So we are working under mandates by the Ministry of Health and OH West for how can we facilitate and, and receive inter-hospitals transfers within our Waterloo Wellington system, within the OH West system and within the province to create capacity. And this is a new directive that has just recently come out that any hospital can be directed at any time, anywhere to take a patient where there's need. And the need would be to balance the capacity of either the, to reach, meet the demands of COVID response and patient volumes or to respond to non-COVID patient needs. And this often is due to COVID volumes straining the capacity of acute care and critical care needs in our region and out of our region. We have responded to help the Toronto, greater Toronto area in our region by receiving patients into Waterloo Wellington healthcare system because of overcapacity. We also work to transfer patients to higher levels of care when needed or more specialized care that can't be created or accommodated locally here at our three sites. Next slide, please. Just wanted to demonstrate here how some of the impact in service. The two graphs here show on the left-hand side is the pre-COVID. This is adult surgical wait times, pre-COVID, the purple bars in the histogram represent the completed case volumes of surgery and the black lines are the wait times that are tracked provincially. The left-sided bars where you see that the black lines don't meet the completed case volumes, those are the wait times that are impacting the ability for hospitals to actually create and complete elective surgeries that need to be done in the province. So it just gives a little visual there of how the system can be impacted in the backlog that we've have now that we're trying to overcome together with our system partners. Next slide, please. One of the other areas of focus and important to us is our response to Crescent Care Arthur. We did have initial contact with this home through the regional IMS in December of 2020. And then through work and inability to get a outbreak under control, we were part of a voluntary management order from the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care to be deployed into operation or management of the Crescent Care Arthur home on January 12th, 2021. We did deploy in a team to the home, which compromised administrative leads, direct care, so nursing, infection control. Some of our educators and our professional practice leads were put into direct care. We also put in specialized expertise of supply chain management and housekeeping. The goals of how we could help Crescent Care Arthur were to ensure that all of the needs of the residents that were in the home were being met, to stop the spread of, quote, of the COVID-19 outbreak for which we were asked to help with, to stabilize the staffing of the home since they had a lot of staff themselves that were off with COVID-related illnesses and to enhance services and build up capacity to help support and avoid future outbreaks. And to date, we've spent approximately 8,000 hours of Wellington Healthcare Alliance staff dedicated to the response to support Crescent Care Arthur. This, next slide, please. This has impacted us staffing-wise in an already difficult situation. The health human resource shortages in our frontline staff positions. It's been difficult at times and we have a little bit of a stretch in our medical lab. Rettory technicians are experiencing nursing staff and getting experienced staff onboarded. Pharmacy technicians, we have some gaps. We've experienced challenges with our own staff who were sent to long-term care settings while also trying to maintain staffing throughout our, our hospital sites. Our overtime costs. Sorry, our COVID-19 challenges do impact our Grove's future funding, which is based on growth and volumes. As I spoke to earlier, our ED volumes are down, our admissions are down and that impacts our volumes as well as our ambulatory volume base. Our statistics do show that many of the healthcare, health, human resources are leaving the health sector altogether, making recruiting even more challenging. And this will impact us further when the pandemic ends. Our staff and professional staff are tired. They've described being felt as if they're burnt out. We are working hard as a senior team to explore more impactful wellness strategies with our HR counterparts. And we're working hard to ensure that all of our staff have good communication so they're aware of what's going on all the time. And how can we best advocate for them in this newfound mass vaccination strategy that we're all working under? I'm going to hand over, over to Becky now, Rebecca Stewart. She's going to talk to you on variants of concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. So just wanted to talk very high level about the variants of concern in the context of what really has us concerned for what a third wave could look like. So as you will have heard, there are three significant variants of concern that are currently circulating. One out of the UK, one out of South Africa and one out of Brazil. And these are the three dominant ones and the ones we're hearing a lot about in the media right now. But there are several others currently also that have been identified. The good news is that as of early reporting, there is good early evidence that the impact on the efficacy of the vaccines and the potential for reinfection is favorable. What we're also knowing though is that it's one of those scenarios where we're very much sort of putting the parachute together after we've jumped out of the plane as lots of research is being done in, in real world circumstances. B117, which is the strain out of the UK, is itself specifically demonstrating much increased transmissibility. And that simply means it's easier to spread this variant of COVID-19. And there's also a higher risk of hospitalization and death. And one statistic I saw over the weekend indicated that there might be as much as a 30% greater chance of mortality with the B117 strain than with the original strain of COVID-19. We do know that B117 is the dominant strain circulating in Ontario right now. And it has been identified within the Wellington, Duffering, Guelph Public Health Catchment Area. So as of press time, when this deck was created, we had four confirmed cases within the region and 99 additional cases of positive COVID tests that had screened positive for a variant of concern. It's just the specific genotype of that variant was not yet determined. And the, the latest update just about an hour ago is that this number of additional screened positive cases has already increased 33% over last week. And we're now up to 132 of those cases. Next slide, please. So again, the real concern specifically around B117 is its enhanced transmissibility. So it is easier to spread. The effective reproductive number is a public health measurement of transition. And what it tells you is the average number of infections that are caused by one infection. So if one person has COVID, how many people on average will they spread it to? Anytime you see your RT become greater than one, that is indicative of exponential growth. And these are two graphs from the Science Advisory Table, which I thought were very telling and speak to that enhanced transmissibility of the VOCs. So on the left-hand side in orange, we have the RT if we just look at variants of concern. And that is 1.34. And what that tells us is for every one person who has COVID, they will spread it to 1.3 other people on average. On the right side, we have the early variant or the non-variant strain of COVID. And its RT is 0.9, meaning that for every person who has it, they will, will spread it to on average 1.9 or less than one individuals. So again, just to speak to the enhanced transmissibility of these variants of concern. Next slide. And so really we, we are worried about the variants of concern for two reasons. So firstly, increased transmissibility simply means more people are going to get sick. We have an increased incidence of disease. And out of that, there, there are two major things that can happen. First, we're going to see increased incidence of severe disease and death. And that's both in terms of the impact of greater disease severity just based on the nature of the mutation or the mutations alone. But we also know that a given percentage of people who get COVID will get severely ill and will die. So the more people we have sick period, the more people we are likely to see experience that greater mortality. And this in turn puts that increased strain on the system and hospital services. The other thing that we're concerned about is anytime we have an increased prevalence of disease, we have an increased risk of further mutation. So the more a disease spreads, the more likely it is that it mutates. That's just how viruses work and it's why they've been around for billions of years. And really, we don't know what could come out of that. Currently, we've been fortunate that the mutations with the variants of concern so far identified don't seem to be evading the efficacy of the vaccine. But what if that were to change or what if there were to be a much greater mortality rate from a variant? That's, that's the risk of any mutation further developing. And we really don't know what those potential impacts could be. Next slide. Vaccination does however, remain a good news story. So we've had a great relationship with public health and we've been able to work hard together with them to make sure as many of our staff are vaccinated as possible. So as of March the 18th, 72.1% of all staff have received their first dose. And just this week, when we've been able to bump that up to 75%, which is great. And about 18% are fully vaccinated. And that's more of a reflection of the recent change in direction on the timing of that second dose being moved out to the four-month period. As we had many staff sort of receive their first dose around that time. And so hopefully, within the next 16 weeks, we will see that number increase significantly. Jill, I'll turn it back to you.
Thanks, Becky. So with our, the impact that we feel as our Wellington Healthcare Alliance hospitals, so even when local COVID activity seems to be low, our role as a regional provider and system partner means that we're still heavily impacted. Our local communities feel that the impact through longer wait times reduce access to tertiary and specialty care and through local and regional service reductions, it's felt by many. There are expectations to support congregant care partners also draws on already tight resources and puts us into a bit of a situation with regards to trying to manage our own health of our employees and making sure that our staffing challenges don't impact further. Then the health human resource challenges are likely to be felt for years to come. And this is something that isn't just local, it's also regionally and provincially felt. And then that last slide is just some references and then we're open to take any questions.
Great, thanks very much, Steve. Thanks, Jill. Thanks, Rebecca, for taking some time out of your very busy schedule to be with us today. I thought it was really important for us as members of the council to have an opportunity to hear from our, our health professionals directly. And so really appreciate you coming and spending some time with us today. So I'll turn things over for questions from members of the council. Counselor Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. I have basically two questions and I'll, I'll ask them together. Perhaps to Mr. Street or to Ms. Stewart. My questions, I guess, Steve and Rebecca are with respect to vaccination rates. Firstly, maybe you could speak to, I would have expected to see something approaching 100% of your staff vaccinated, just given that they're on the front lines in medical care. Maybe you have a comment about that. And secondly, for the benefit of the public, can we foresee a time where we'll see a greater amount of the general public being vaccinated? Do we foresee a target in perhaps May or June? The reason I'm asking is there's lots of different information being bandied about and I, I'm hopeful that we'll get a clearer picture of what's happening locally. When, when the, when the 30, 40, 50-year-olds can expect to queue up and receive their vaccines?
Yes, Mr. Foster, that's a, that's a great question. And it's one our board has been asking us as well. Public health unit took a little bit of a different strategy than maybe some other units across the province. And they, they put their focus initially on those congregant care settings. So a number of our staff early on who were in Crescent Care Arthur did get vaccinated right away. A lot of our frontline staff working in emergent assessment centers did as well. But they were working in parallel with some of those other provincial priority groups, indigenous populations, those over 80. So we're ahead of many jurisdictions across the province in those areas. And I think that will get us there as a group faster. So whereas we're only at 75% now, we still have a number of individuals who are not patient-facing. So those really should be a lesser priority. So in our support services area even, a worker that's delivering a meal to a patient will get, will be eligible to get the vaccine should they choose to. But the cook working in the kitchen is not patient-facing, so they're not as higher priorities. So we're working with public health to ensure that every dose is maximized in terms of its value to our community. And, and just because you work in a hospital doesn't mean you should get it over someone that's working in another sector, whether your police, EMS or, or fire or teacher. So that's, and in terms of timelines, we're hearing by the end of June, the provincial government has set a target that everyone who wants to get a first dose should have that access.
And there was a second part to that question, but I can't remember what it was.
I think it was about the 30, 40 and 50-year-olds and access too. That's I think what Mr. Foster asked. I'm not sure if Steve answered it with regards to the population of the, you know, the province has a statement.
Yes, that's right, Jill. And I think Mr. Street maybe alluded to it or he did answer it. And I asked that for the benefit of our, our citizens because there's lots of information going about and everyone's, you know, anxious to get to, or I should say, many people want to know when exactly, you know, you're 40 years old, you're 50 years old, when, when will it be our turn to, to line up and get vaccinated? And that's why I asked the question for the benefit of the citizens.
Yeah, I just wanted that a little bit because I did, was on a call this morning with the mayor's and sales, across accounting with Dr. Mercer. And one of the things that public health does is when they get a And one of the things that public health does, it's when they get a week's supply of vaccine, they use it all up by the weekend. So the right now, bottleneck has been on getting the supply of vaccine. So as soon as we get, as soon as public health gets those vaccines, they'll be going down based on the province's timeline. So the more vaccine supply we get, the faster we get to to the, you know, below below 70s. Councilor Van Looy?
Thanks, Mayor, through you. First, I want to say I appreciate the work that that you do do, Steve and Jill and Rebecca at the hospital. It's something that's been important to us and especially even getting the hospital up and running prior to this. It's we can be very thankful. We have a state-of-the-art hospital. Some of the questions I have relate a little bit towards the concerns of those who are coming in now seem to have waited for so long that we see a higher admission, basically some of the, what do they call it? It's affecting their mental health. We have increased. They waited too long to come into it. I'm trying to find your slide there, but I can't find it. Anyway, part of when we had the CEO from the Mental Health Association, she said, we we struggled with the fact that we created a perfect storm. And trying to then do mental health through virtual means was very, very difficult. We see somewhat of the same thing where the hospitals have to work within a framework and try to provide healthcare, which I can hardly imagine how difficult it is, especially when you have three staff members in Crescent Care and Arthur, 8,000 hours works out to almost three staff members. But we seem to see a lower capacity rate in the hospital because people are afraid to come in. That has also pushed up the the concerns based on your slide where you speak about the the health risks were higher and that they're coming in now. Do you have a concern with those who are coming in now have waited too long? And also, what was is our occupancy rate or capacity rate in 2020 as we walk through in comparison to 2019? I appreciate that. Thanks.
All right, I'll start with that just for a minute there. So when I spoke to people waiting too long, they were often related to specific health concerns. Some of them were, and you might have seen a lot of things around people with chest pain or chronic disease that maybe if they came sooner, they wouldn't have been as ill, so their length of stay would have been shorter. With regards to mental health, one of the impacts initially was the same as the surgical backlogs. When the province first went into wave one of COVID, there were, everything was asked to kind of, you know, shut your doors. And that meant community mental health access. So a lot of hospital services rely on partnering with the community and then having access for patients to have their care outside of the hospital. When a big corridor of that is with mental health. And mental health, early on, their community, they also weren't available to support the needs of those patients. And I think a lot of them struggled through it, but now we're seeing that big bulge regionally with mental health specifically. And then the other thing, though, that with some of the lockdown measures, and this is in Chi-Hi data, things because less people were not necessarily out and about during lockdown. There were less traumas, less car accidents, less, you know, big things that could impact services. So that impacted numbers too. And we're happy to see those preventative measures. But the fact is, those are volumes that you usually see in your count that weren't there and they were absent. And Steve, I don't know if you want to add something to that?
Just maybe the second part of the question around occupancy. In 2019, pre-COVID, at the Legacy Grove site, we had some periods of time where we were at 140% occupancy. We probably ended the year just over 100%, maybe 110 or 12, I think. And I don't have the exact number on my fingertips. I apologize. We did move in the middle of a pandemic. The team picked the the lull between waves, so that gave us greater capacity. So this year, we've averaged probably about 90% capacity on average. We'll still have days where whereas our old facility, we are running at 39 beds, we have the ability to run over to 50 beds in this new facility. And we could double that capacity should the need exist. And that's what some of the planning was at the early stages. But we've had a number of days where we've been well over or closer to that 50 mark, probably a month in the last year, over 30 days at that mark. But the capacity definitely as a percentage, lower than our older facility.
Yeah, just just as a follow-up, just want to say I I think everybody here is is definitely concerned for the health of the community. And thanks for the work that you do do, because I know that the policies and the things that that you have to work within make it more difficult for you for sure. Every time, I think anyone who's trying to run anything, it becomes very difficult when staff have restrictions or you lose staff because there's, you know, putting three over to a mental or to a different long-term care home, it would add a burden to you. So I appreciate that part. So thanks for that coming here.
Thanks. And just as a point of clarity, I think at one point, we had over maybe two dozen staff in that 8,000 hours is just in the first two months of the year. So there is a number of clinicians in there 24/7, but I appreciate your comments, Councilor Van Looy.
Councilor McLean?
Sorry, except for saying thank you, I have no questions at all. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two questions. The first question is for Rebecca Stewart. In terms of just getting a context of the RT values for the the older Corona and the new variant, what is the RT for just a regular flu? So we can kind of, because you're just comparing the same variants. But what would be like a regular flu so people can get a context? That's the first question. The other one is for Steve, the director. I was just wondering, you you mentioned about the capacity. I was wondering, like, is there long-term, if you didn't have the extra beds in the old groves for that extra capacity? Capacity in my own business and, you know, like sometimes there's this drive for efficiency where you drive everything down to the, you know, so everything flows under normal conditions. But, you know, the the marketplace for me would be, you know, it's volatile, so I make investments and then certain amount of, so in this case of the Corona, it was a surprise and an unusual event. And like, is there in the policy of how the hospital is run, any slack so that you can have that resilience for these occasions? So those are two different questions.
Becky, would you like to respond to the first?
Sure. So I don't have that data right in front of me in terms of the effective reproductive number of seasonal flu. It would also highly depend on the circulating strain and whether it was circulating in an outbreak or a pandemic scenario or versus just regular seasonal seasonal flu. So I do apologize. I don't have that data in front of me. But we certainly know that this year in particular, we are not seeing circulating flu or some of the other diseases such as RSV, the respiratory syncytial virus, which bring people, young and old, into our hospital. And that's a huge part because of the source control of distancing and masks and good hand hygiene. So I will, as Steve answers the second part of your question, I will look for a value for you. But it is not something that I have for the past year and a bit, as I say, because we have seen drastic reductions in the circulation of those diseases, which again, has really helped with hospital capacity. As I can only imagine, if we were seeing regular circulating seasonal flu and all of those other things this year on top of COVID, it would certainly be quite a disastrous situation.
And in terms of the hospital capacity, one of the things that I'm very proud of the team here, many of which worked through the 2003 SARS crisis. The design of this hospital is designed to meet not only today's needs of our community, but future needs. And that takes a creative, a lot of creative work with to work within the ministry rules. And I'm sure you would you would all acknowledge that that is a challenge at the best of times. But building a hospital, we got approval over nine years ago, and it took us nine years to cross the finish line because we're navigating the various approvals and taking factors in like population growth. But this facility was designed, as I mentioned, to to have 100 head rolls. So that if we were in a pandemic situation, even though we may only be funded today for 40-some-odd beds, we have the ability to adjust services and to have 100 inpatients should we meet that crisis level. Hopefully, we never do, but this facility was designed with that in mind. As our community grows, a new hospital built will not be here to meet that growth. We have to rely on the infrastructure that we currently have in place. The Legacy Grove site, we've kept operational. The ministry's maintained funding. We keep the lights on. That's another backup. That hasn't been in the capacity that I spoke about. But that would be in that additional capacity should we ever need to do it. And again, Jill and her counterparts across the region looked at a number of scenarios, including the use of field hospitals, field hospitals the military offered as well. And we identified that as probably being our last choice scenario that we would occupy Legacy Groves if we could find the staffing to do that should the need ever arise.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Rebecca. Councilor Dunsmore?
Yep. First, let me start by thanking you all and asking you to thank your frontline staff, all the doctors and the nurses, and even the cook who hasn't been vaccinated yet. The job that your staff are doing under these times is incredible. And I think particularly the fact that you opened a new hospital in the middle of a pandemic. You got everybody over there. You're just handling this so well. And I just want to, for my family and myself, just to say thank you. The only question I have is I'd like, and I guess it requires a little bit of hypothesizing on your side, but you guys are in the middle of this. And I'm wondering what you think the impacts would have been had we not had the restrictions that we have in place in place? How much do you think it would have been worse, would have been the same? Or what do you think the impact of that would have been?
In terms of the provincial restrictions, I think I think it would have been a lot worse. I think we look at jurisdictions when we were first looking at this in early 2020. We were all looking at Italy. We're looking at New York. And this virus seems to have a different profile depending on the jurisdiction it's in. The one thing we do control, though, is how we respond to it. And as a system, we made some pretty tough choices in the hospital. You've made some tough choices in our province and our premier has made some tough choices. And these are not popular. These are very difficult and they have to be done with some compassion and empathy, that many people have suffered through this. But the suffering could have been much worse. What we saw across the system with an outbreak, whether it be in our Palmerston site or Crescent Care Arthur, it quickly grinds the health system to a halt. And not everyone is impacted equally. But within health, I think our focus has really been, what do we have to do to ensure that when you or a loved one comes to our emergency department for an acute episodic care need? Or your child comes in expecting to deliver a baby, that we have the capacity to do that. If we get into a situation where we've opened up 100 inpatient beds to deal with COVID patients, that means we're not doing surgery, not doing diagnostics. We're not doing most of our ambulatory services. And that's what we really try to avoid. So we do know it's difficult. We do know it's unpopular. But from the hospital focus, it's it's a necessary ask that we have of our leaders to work with our populations to try to find that right balance of support and reduced activity and and social distancing and all the other public health measures that today have guided us to where we are today.
No, thank you, Mayor Lyndon. I echo Councilor Dunsmore's thanks. I mean, I have to admit, I tend to take for granted the medical services we have in place. You just expect that they'll look after you. And I just want to say thank you to all of you in your organization for your efforts to keep us going and for future efforts. The one thing I picked up on that I found the most concerning in your presentation is regardless of COVID, it's this declining number of people within the health services sector. I mean, what is what is the reason for that? And do you have any plans for how you're going to rebuild the number of people who are working in that sector? Because we come to rely on it and to hear that it's, we're seeing a decline in it, it's concerning.
Jill, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, so it is concerning. And I think the fact is, it's not, part of it is with, there have been people who have decided to leave the healthcare sector, either through retirement or through just deciding to move to a different career. But the one thing is, it's really been in, that's created the disparity. And the risk right now is that everyone in, basically in the province is all trying to access the same resource. And that's what's put the strain on the health human resources for us in our area and in, you know, everywhere. We're all trying to fish out of the same pond. So what we are doing in our region is to try and work with our health partners and looking at how can we share services? How could we share even people? And right now, there's been some directives that have allowed for hospitals to deploy across hospitals. We haven't done it as yet, but I am in discussion with our partner in the cancer care sector for seeing can we share some pharmacy texts or something like that that can continue to support services? Also, working closely with the colleges and universities to see how can we strengthen and create faster turnover? And how can we educate in place? There is a virtual classroom at one of the long-term care homes in Mount Forest, which is helping support the the growth and development of public personal support workers. And working with Conestoga, with the CNE there, the chief of nursing there, on even a rural nursing program itself. It's not going to be quick, but the fact is, developing that interest, planting the seed and then growing it. So there's a lot of different irons we have in the fire. But right now, a lot of it is in working as with our partner hospitals to see how we can share existing resources within the framework and safety, though, of all the guidelines that we have to follow.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilor, for that. Really want you to send our heartfelt thanks to Steve, Jill, and Rebecca, to your whole team. You know, having to deal with this pandemic while you're in a brand-new hospital and then having to kind of reignite Legacy Grove to work with public health on that side. A huge thanks to your whole team and your leadership as well, Stephen. And don't take it for granted. We have an amazing group here. And I really appreciate you taking the time to be with us today and answering our questions and giving us a little bit of a context from a hospital perspective. So thanks very much and enjoy the rest of the day.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate being invited to share this story with you. Have a great day.
You too. See you later. Moving on to the next presentation we have, and we have Guy Jurno, Integrity Commissioner. He's going to bring an interim report, so I know that he's in the waiting room. And so I'll make sure that he's connecting to audio, he is. And so I will turn things over to Guy. Welcome, Guy.
Sorry, just wanted to unmute myself. Thank you very much. Chair and your worship chair and members of council. There was no written report, by the way, is my audio okay, your worship? Okay, good. There was no written report in your agenda package, because this is an interim report, and it will be very brief. I should note for the record that I am joined by Paul Burbank, who's a lawyer in my office, who assists me in these matters, and he is familiar to some members of council. On Tuesday, February 23rd, I received from the clerk formal notice of a motion that had been passed the day previous, that is Monday, February 22nd. And there were two parts to that motion. The first part read that Council of the Township of Centre Wellington removed Counselor Van Luin as deputy mayor. The second part read that the Integrity Commissioner be requested to initiate an investigation on whether Counselor Van Luin breached council's code of conduct or the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. The first part of the motion about the deputy mayor doesn't mention me, it wasn't referred to me, and is outside my scope. It is obviously the prerogative of council to determine who shall or who shall no longer be the deputy mayor based on such considerations as council determines to be relevant. The second part of the, the motion, the part that is addressed to the Integrity Commissioner, is in fact expressly provided for by the municipal act, which states that council, that any council may make a request, and I'm quoting, about whether a member of council or a local board has contravened the code of conduct. Now, usually, a request for an inquiry takes the form of, of a complaint. That is, a specific allegation by a specific individual called the complainant that a specific member, known as the respondent, has contravened specific sections of the code. While this is usually what happens, it is not required. Because as I've noted, the municipal act does allow council simply to ask a question, that is, to request an inquiry into whether or not a contravention occurred without making any particular or any specific allegation. Now, upon receiving the referral, I wrote to the clerk on this particular point, and I basically asked whether council wanted to be considered the complainant, and if so, who would be communicating the complainant's position. In hindsight, I should not have assumed that council intends to fill the role of the complainant. It's certainly open to council to decide to act in this capacity. That is, to bring forward a specific allegation. However, under the municipal act, it's also open to council simply to submit a request to the Integrity Commissioner for an inquiry without taking any position. And I will assume council has done the latter, unless council decides to assert a position. The municipal act requires that I maintain strict confidentiality up until the point that I provide a final report to you that addresses whether the code of conduct has been contravened. Until then, I'm not permitted to disclose the information I've collected or the names of witnesses who've been interviewed. Now, on the subject of confidentiality, obviously, in order to interview witnesses, it's sometimes necessary to share the context for questions, though only sharing what is strictly necessary to engage the witnesses in it, in an interview. Also, on the topic of confidentiality, as a matter of fairness, the respondent does get a chance to address anything that is suggested about a breach that has occurred. So subject to, you know, confidentiality restrictions, I can say generally that so far I have provided an opportunity to be heard to all members of council, individual members of council, either orally or in writing, those, those who wish to. And I'm also reaching out, have been, have interviewed, and continue to reach out to additional potential witnesses. By witnesses, I simply mean people who have possibly relevant information. I expect by the time this is concluded that the total number of people to whom I've spoken will be at least ten, including five council members and five, at least five additional witnesses. Currently, we're in the middle of interviewing people who I will, I will say are witnesses because they hold official positions. And in those positions, they appear to have relevant information. So people acting in official capacity. Subject to the continued availability of these officials, I would expect interviews to be completed within the next ten to fourteen days. At that point, one of two things will happen. Before I present to this council, in fact, any council, a report that says that a, a member has contravened the code, as part of procedural fairness, I show that member, who, a draft of the report excluding the recommendations, and invite the member to, to comment. On the other hand, if the report is going to conclude there was no contravention, I skip that step and report directly to, to council. In either case, when I say reporting to council, I report through the clerk and also directly to the respondent, and in cases where there is a complainant, directly to the complainant. So I thank you, Mayor, Chair, Committee of the Whole, and through you, other members of council or committee of the whole, for the opportunity to provide this interim report. But while I have the opportunity, if I might, I just wish to briefly give council a heads-up on an additional matter. Another role of Integrity Commissioners is to conduct inquiries into allegations under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Same confidentiality rules apply to these inquiries, same basic process in the middle applies to, to these inquiries, but at the end, those processes are different. And I mention this because I don't think, we, we've had a case like that here in Centre Wellington. At the end of the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act inquiry, an integrity commissioner's decision is whether to take the matter to, to a judge of the Superior Court of Justice. Then this is part of the new provisions of the municipal, municipal act that were added a few years ago. So after one of these municipal conflict of interest act inquiries, like, and the Integrity Commissioner doesn't report to council with a recommendation or a series of recommendations that council can, you may or may not accept. Instead, in the case of one of these conflict of interest act applications, at the end of the process, the Integrity Commissioner just decides to proceed to court or not proceed to court, and is required by the municipal act to publish the reasons for that determination. Now, they are also provided to council for information, but they are published as they're required to be under the municipal act as soon as they're issued. They also go to the applicant and the respondent, and I mention this because I am completing today a municipal conflict of interest act application here in Centre Wellington, and I expect to issue the determination and the reasons and publish them in accordance with the municipal act within the next twenty-four to forty-eight, forty-eight hours. So since I was speaking to you, I thought I would, I'd provide that heads-up. Anyway, thank you very much for your, your attention, the opportunity to, to deliver this interim report today.
Thanks very much, Guy, and I just wanted to give counselors the opportunity to ask questions, if they had any on this matter, recognizing that we're still in process. But I want to make sure that counselors understand what the process are, and if there's any questions about it, they can ask me today. Counselor McPrague, anything?
I have nothing, Mayor Lyndon.
Counselor Dunsmore?
I have no questions.
Counselor Kitcher?
No questions.
Counselor McQueen?
No questions.
Counselor Van Luin?
No questions.
Counselor Foster?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Guy, I really appreciate you being here today and look forward to your report. Have a good rest of the day, and thanks also Paul for being here.
Thank you.
Moving on to confirmation of the agenda, I have a recommendation that the Council of Township of Centre Wellington confirm the agenda for the meeting held March 22nd, 2021. Mover for that, please. Counselor Dunsmore, seconded by Counselor McPrague, all in favor? And that carried confirmation of minutes, we have two sets of minutes there. One from the public meeting that we held on January 27th, and then one, made of the whole, from February the 16th, 2021. Our recommendation that the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting held January 27th and February 16th, 2021, be adopted and circulated. I have a mover for that, please. Counselor McPrague, seconded by Counselor Dunsmore, any discussion on those? Counselor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor, I, I just want to point out the, the minutes from February 16th, I believe, are, are inaccurate, they, they do not include the fact that I, I made the motion for the referral. And I'd like to see those minutes corrected. They're, they're not completely accurate.
What item was that, Counselor Foster?
It's the, the minutes from the February 16th meeting. They're, they're not completely accurate.
No, I heard what you said, but what item on that, on that, those minutes?
It's the, the item of deferring a decision on the deputy mayor and referring it to the Integrity Commissioner. The minutes are not completely accurate on that matter.
Yeah, no, I heard what you said about it. Yeah, no, I don't, I don't have any, I don't have a recollection of that, so what's the process for, okay?
Mayor, Mayor, I made, I made a motion at that meeting, and the minutes do not-
Counselor Foster? Counselor Foster, I'm asking the clerk, so just, please mute yourself for a second. So what's the process for him? Okay, so Counselor Foster, you need to put a motion forward that clearly describes what you want changed. We have to get a mover, you have to get a second for that, and then we'll vote on that at the council.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd, I'd like to make a motion that the minutes be amended to include the fact that Counselor Foster made a motion to refer the matter to the Integrity Commissioner rather than the mayor did. And that the minutes reflect the fact that the motion was not sufficiently dealt with. And that later on in the proceedings, the mayor made the very same motion as I did initially.
Yeah, okay, so you've added a few different comments there than what you said initially.
Well, effectively, Mayor, what I'm suggesting is the minutes need to reflect what actually took place, and they don't. The minutes need to be accurate.
Okay, so I understand what you're saying, Counselor Foster. What I'm providing direction on is that we have to know the item, and we have to know clearly what you're asking to be changed, so that we can get a second. And so if you can identify the, the item we're talking about and exactly what you think should happen, and then we'll call that to vote.
Well, we know, I've already stated-
So page three, on the, the second paragraph of page three, is that what we're talking about?
I'm talking about the entire minutes of the February 16th meeting. They're, they're mostly complete except for one thing. The minutes do not include, as I've already described, the, the motion that I made. I believe the minutes are incorrect because they show it as your motion, sir.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Mayor Clerk Guy answer it for a second.
Counselor Foster, I would draw your attention, please, to page three, under delegation, second paragraph. Counselor Foster indicated he would prefer the matter be investigated by the Integrity Commissioner and indicated he would like to make a motion to amend the recommendation.
That's correct, and the motion was never dealt with, Madam Clerk. And at the conclusion of the minutes, it states that the mayor made the motion.
With all due respect, Counselor Foster, if the mayor did not acknowledge, or you were not acknowledged by the chair, then it would not be included in the minutes.
Well, should it not be included? The motion was-
Not, with all due respect, if you are not recognized by the chair, we do not include that in the minutes.
Well, the minutes then are not accurate, that troubles me, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Foster, if you wish to put forward a motion adding the wording to a particular place, then we can certainly amend it based on council's decision.
Just on that, Madam Clerk, I've, I've already made such a motion, that the minutes be accurate and that they reflect the fact that I made the motion.
Again, with all due respect, Counselor Foster, you must provide me with the wording and where it is to be inserted in the minutes.
The last paragraph of the minutes need to be adjusted to reflect the fact that I made the motion.
Last paragraph of the minutes under-
Perhaps it's the second last paragraph, the paragraph that says that the mayor made the motion.
Okay, with all due respect, again, Counselor Foster, we took a recess. And then the mayor put forward a motion based on the, the discussion at hand. You were not recognized by the chair when you, when you put forward that motion, is my recollection.
We have a movement, we have a, a motion on the table, so we'll deal with that motion on the table. If that doesn't pass, then we'll move on to motion, that Counselor Foster is speaking of. All in favor of the minutes as presented? opposed? And that carried. Okay, moving on to delegation. We have, the first report is the Trees on Public Property bylaw. And we have Matt Yu and Len, that Landscape Architecture and Urban Forestry Plan, and we'll be going through the report. But before that, we have a delegation from Tony Ellis, Neighbor Woods. And so at this time, I will ask, there's also a presentation there, so I'll ask Tony to speak with us, welcome, Tony.
Hello. Do you read me loud and clear?
We read you loud and clear, go ahead, thank you.
Great, okay, so I have a PowerPoint, and I'm not sure if it's the, the clerk, oh, great, wonderful. Oh, perfect, look at this. Okay. Thank you. I am pleased to be here today, representing Neighbor Woods, to support the recommendation for community services to go ahead and draft a public tree bylaw. And I really want to thank you for making time for me to appear today, because I know you have a very busy jam pack schedule. For more than ten years, Neighbor Woods, our grassroots organization, has run a number of educational research and hands-on programs that support our urban forest. We've been stewarding, planting, citizen pruning our trees. We've run a tree inventory for the last ten years, collecting data about the various attributes of our trees, such as species, composition, and health. We've run tree talks and tree walks, and we've run a number of special projects to highlight the value of our trees, including our Tree Price Tag Project and the Superman tapes that we donned on trees. In 2019, some of you will know that we started Tree Trust to raise charitable donations to fund professional tree care for legacy trees. And I'm really proud to say that this program has now expanded to include four other communities. We've got Stratford, Toronto Islands, Meaford, and the Town of Blue Mountains, and they're all part of our Tree Trust family, started here in Centre Wellington, so I'm kind of proud about that. Next slide, please. Thank you. Our trees need protection, and they are worth it. And it's good business, frankly, to protect the thing that makes this community so desirable, profitable, and special. profitable and special. Next, please. As I mentioned, for a decade, dozens of volunteers have worked collecting data on our trees in Centre Wellington. And I'd like to give a shout out at this moment to Counselor McIlwain and his wife Julie, um, who were a part of the inventory team for one, if not two, years. Um, last summer, we inputted all of our data into a program called iTree, which is a computer modeling program, which is, uh, available through the US Forestry Service. And their report provided us with estimates of the ecological value of our trees from carbon sequestering, air cleaning and a variety of other things. Um, and let me know if you'd like me to send you a copy because I would be happy to. Um, one key finding is this. Um, and please bear in mind that it's only accounting for ten thousand trees. It's a fraction of all of the trees that grace Centre Wellington. And the value to replace these trees would be twenty-six million. And again, it's only the, the ten thousand trees that we've looked at. So we have a sense of the financial value of our trees, but, next slide, please. Most of us value trees for other reasons, and it's usually, frankly, the sheer beauty of a tree that people value. And the trees certainly highlight the heritage value of our community. Next, please. So the top picture is a really useful illustration of some of the services that our public trees are providing. And I could go on, as you can imagine, at great length of all of the benefits of our trees, but I'll just stick to a few key ones. Um, right off the bat, you'll notice the shade. It's inviting to walkers and cyclists. And of course, keeping sidewalks and roads shady is really good at a time when we're very worried about rising skin cancer rates. Shade is valuable, not just for people, but also for pavement. Shade helps extend the life of our streets by cooling them and can allow us to put off repaving and patching holes for a bit. Shade can also reduce the demand for cooling and act as a windbreak, reducing heating bills, which comfort and utility bills aside, is helping in the climate change height. And let me talk about rainwater for a minute. The rate and volume of storm water runoff is higher in urban areas because of all the impervious surfaces that we have, from parking lots, new buildings, roads and so on. Which, all this impervious paving, it reduces the amount of natural infiltration that happens. So you can see this during a heavy rainstorm, right? Water rushing down into the storm drains and drainage ditches. This rainwater, having flowed over the pavement, is not just pure water. It contains a variety of pollutants, rolled salts, heavy metals and oil, all of which wind up in the municipal sewer system and are discharged, discharged into the river. So our street trees intercept the rain and they capture it in their canopy and they slow it down so it can be absorbed into the ground, helping to frankly replenish the aquifer. And our iTree report has found, in fact, that our ten thousand trees are intercepting in the order of eight million liters of water a year. Trees are also shown to slow traffic because they give the perception that our street trees are, are, pardon me, that our streets are more narrow. And all those leaves clean the air by filtering out particulate matter. These trees are sequestering carbon stored in their trunks, roots and adjacent soil, which is, we all know, is increasingly important in the climate change emergency that we're in. And trees send a very welcoming message to visitors. In fact, research from the States has found that customers pay up to ten percent more for goods that they purchase on a shady street. And they feel that the products are of higher quality. And it's not surprising that they are inclined to linger longer. And finally, I invite you to ponder which street would you rather live on? It's no wonder that tree properties sell at a premium. Next, please. And while we are starting to quantify and really appreciate the many values of our urban forest, they are facing so many stresses. They're facing invasive species. We have all seen what's happened with our Emerald Ash Bore problem sweeping through, and the top picture is a really graphic example of the loss of our ash trees. But we're also now facing the potential, uh, invasion of oak wilt and also gypsy moth. Densification, uh, is also, uh, affecting our trees where new construction requires moving existing trees. Pollution and road salt, which is especially tough on our most valuable species being the sugar maple. Soil compaction from foot and vehicle traffic, neglect from years of taking them for granted and competing and losing to infrastructure. And the bottom slide in particular is kind of interesting because that's in front of the Arts Centre and that would have been at one time a big, wide, grassy boulevard that was home to sugar maples and its loss, the fight to cars and parking. Next, please. So we need to protect the healthy trees we've got. Next, please. So I'd like to tell you about one particular tree. It's about ninety to a hundred years old and it's withstood droughts, hurricane hazel, blizzards and years of neglect. It's busy storing carbon in its trunks, roots and soil, among other various things that it's doing for us. A couple of years ago, here's what happened to this tree. Next, please. Development with our tree policy. So here you can see that the contractor got the memo from the tree policy that told him that he needed tree protection zone out to the drip line to protect the roots and the canopy. So he got as far as buying the tree protection stuff, the snow fencing and the metal barrier, but that's as far as it went. And the township only armed with the policy, which is really a request, was powerless to take any action. And I'd like to just point out what the problem with this is. As you know, with a tree, as much is going on above it as below it. So the tree's feeder roots are generally in the top foot or sole of the soil and this pile of bricks that you can see there on the left has effectively crushed all of the delicate little root hairs on the oops. Can we go back, please? Thanks. Um, and compacted the soil. So, okay, so first of all, those bricks are compacting the roots and killing off the delicate root hairs that feed the tree. And frankly, it's compacting the soil so that all the important air pockets, the, all the little important pockets for air and water that feed the tree roots are going to be crushed too. And in fact, it only takes a couple of passes with heavy equipment to turn soil into a virtually impenetrable concrete base. And you can also see, uh, on the left-hand side that one of the branches of this tree was obviously damaged and had to be removed from truck traffic. Next, please. So when this tree dies, and it likely will, it's the taxpayers who are going to be left with the bill for taking it down and its unnecessary loss to our canopy in the urban core. This is why we need a tree bylaw, to protect our publicly owned assets, to prevent tree removal and to protect trees, including the requirement, in requirement for enforceable tree protection zones. Next, please. It's wonderful to see new trees being planted now, but of course, it'll take quite some time before these new trees contribute in a meaningful way to our urban canopy. So it seems obvious, let's protect the trees that we have. Next, please. This community has made great strides to building a greener community. We've hired an urban forest manager, Yay, who has adopted a systematic tree planting program, spearheading community tree plants to help restore our natural habitats and adopted a street tree proactive pruning plan. Um, we're also adding bike lanes to streets and we're developing trail master plans and we instituted a healthy growth committee, a committee on which I am fortunate to sit. So we've done some great things and it's now time to take the next step. Next slide, please. Centre Wellington is an outstanding municipality in so many ways, but in this case, we are outstanding for the wrong reason. We are on the, we are the only municipality on this slide without a public tree bylaw. Next, please. So like roads, bridges and buildings, the public trees are vital to a healthy, livable community and frankly, they belong to all of us. So trees need legal protection and we urge this council to move forward towards adopting a public tree bylaw. Next, and final one is, thank you, and I hope I kept under the ten minutes.
Thanks very much, Tony. Uh, we still appreciate what you and your group, um, do in, in our community, always pushing us. Um, but you push us in the right direction, so really appreciate all that you, uh, you have done and appreciate that you're supporting, um, this, this, uh, recommendation, uh, to move forward with the public tree bylaw. So again, thanks, uh, on behalf of our community. And at this point, I will turn things over to, uh, Matt Len um, to talk about our proper, uh, public property, um, trees and public property bylaw. Welcome, Matt.
Thank you. Um, thanks, Matt Len. Thanks also for Tony and, uh, her words of support. I am going to attempt to open up my, um, presentation.
Yeah, our clerk has just given you permission to share your screen now, Matt, so you should be able to share it through, if not now.
Oops, that's wrong button. Okay, how does that look?
It, it's not coming off, it's not coming across at this point.
Oh. Does that fix it? Sorry for the difficulties.
No, no, we can't see if everything's working.
I can share it if you'd like, Matt.
Yeah, sure, if that's possible. Um, I'll just, uh, I'll read on my screen and let you know when it's ready.
You want to put it, you want to, can you put it in the presentation mode, uh, Devlin?
There we go.
Perfect, thank you. So the report that I'm presenting for council's consideration identifies an issue that is felt across all departments that have been working together to protect and preserve trees within the township of Centre Wellington, as well as members of the public who are often witnesses when those efforts fail. The report also presents what we believe is the next logical step in resolving this, these issues, a trees on public property bylaw. Uh, next slide, please. The purpose of the proposed bylaw is to enhance the urban tree canopy through the preservation of existing tree cover by strengthening tree protection measures and controlling tree planting costs by formalizing compensation collected by the township for the unlawful injury or removal of township-owned trees. Uh, next slide. Centre Wellington Council's strategic plan identifies the strategic goal of an active and creative community. Including strategic direction three, we will care for our natural environment. Furthermore, initiative number two seeks to enhance the urban tree canopy and investigate ways to control tree planting costs and to preserve existing tree cover. Uh, next slide. Trees are widely recognized in Ontario for the myriad benefits that they provide from health and wellness to ecosystem services and green infrastructure. In Centre Wellington, they are an integral part of the township's image as a tourist destination and essential to forming the unique quality of natural beauty identified in the official plan, community values. Next slide. We've got some, um, some documents that provide tree protection, uh, that are views, uh, the Wellington County Conservation Sustainable Use Woodlands, Sustainable Use of Woodlands bylaw that was created two thousand and nine. Um, it applies to properties that are one hectare or greater. Uh, they also must meet specific tree size and tree density ratios in order to qualify as a woodlot. This bylaw, um, does not apply to many, if, if any, public trees in Centre Wellington. However, it is a valuable tool that requires property owners to go through a permit process before removing trees. It doesn't, however, have, um, very strong language related to enforcement. We also have the Centre Wellington Public Forest Policy that was prepared January twenty eighteen. This is a guiding document that provides the township's forestry policies, procedures and best practices related specifically to public trees. This, uh, as I said, it's a guiding, it's a, it provides guidance rather than, um, a legal position. Um, so it requests and it expects voluntary compliance. We also have the Centre Wellington Draft Development Manual from March twenty eighteen. And, um, the development manual outlines requirements for tree protection enhancements that developers must meet. Um, in relation to compensation and the tree protection standards, it refers back to the public forest policy. And for enforcement, the only document that we have is the, um, County's Woodlands bylaw. So in effect, the, um, development manual is only as strong as the documents that preceded it. And there's some significant gaps when you're talking about protection, public trees and especially enforcement. Uh, next slide, please. So I'd like to talk about some examples of why bylaws needed. On the left, there is the Centre Wellington Tree Protection Zone Detail. So this was prepared for the public, the public tree policy, sorry, the public forest policy, which was approved by council January twenty eighteen. On the right is an example of a properly installed tree protection zone. That picture is actually from Toronto. Um, to date, uh, in the past three years, I don't think I've seen a properly installed tree protection zone in Centre Wellington. I've seen several that have come close. Um, I've seen others that are completely missing. Um, in most cases, it's a combination of the two. Tony spoke a little bit about the importance of protecting tree roots. I can't stress enough how important it is to, to have a zone around the tree protecting the roots. It's, um, directly related to tree health. It's also directly related to, um, risk and risk to public safety. When construction equipment, uh, disturbance, excavation, any compaction happens within the tree zone, there's an immediate effect to the health of the tree. And the, the more harmful and troubling issue is that there's a structural, um, structural damage that happens to the tree that is no longer visible and puts the public at risk. So I think we should move on to the next slide. So here's an example of a beautiful, mature silver maple. It's four and a half feet diameter across. And, um, you can see on the, on the left-hand slide, the tree did have a tree protection zone. That, um, tree protection fencing does not meet our, our detail. Um, it's not as robust as we ask. It's far smaller than we would request. It's also on only two sides of the tree rather than all four. There are some limitations in this area about how, um, how complete a tree protection zone was possible. However, if you look at the other two slides, the contract- However, if you look at the other two slides, the contractor that was working in that area removed the tree protection fencing, excavated which in the area which would be, would have been protected by the full zone, placed very heavy concrete material on the roots, existing roots of the tree, creating a significant amount of damage to the roots and also piled a large amount of fill right up to the base of the trunk. So not, not a good situation for that tree. If we can move to the next one. Here's another example. This is a part of a row of at least a dozen township street trees. This is just two of them. The first one, contractors roofed a great deal of the existing roots, exposed some more. Not so that a manhole could be installed. The other one shows a large amount of material piled on the roots. Both of these activities are very, very detrimental to the health of the tree. Most of the other trees were also affected, but these, these two are the worst. So at this time, we're just waiting to see whether or not those trees will survive. But we know that they're certainly going to struggle in the future. Next slide, please. This is a residential example, the tree, you can see what, what was left of it on the left. It was assessed by township staff, it was in good or healthy condition. It was assessed as not being a risk to public safety. The homeowner, for their own reasons, decided they wanted to remove it. And so they removed it in two stages and on the right, that's what's left now. There's no intention by the homeowner to compensate for that removed tree. And the work was done without providing any information to the township about the contractor. So we had no insurance. So that puts the public at risk and also the homeowner themselves. Next slide, please. This is another example on one of our rural roads. You can see those trees recently had recently been removed. There was approximately 50 trees removed, maybe a little bit under. The majority of them on township property, just a handful were private. They were all moved at the same time. Some of them ranged up to four, four foot diameter across significant desirable trees. And yeah, again, no compensation, no discussion with the community or with township staff before these trees are moved. And at this point, we don't have any, any way of seeking compensation for these trees. Just one more slide left. So the next steps, this report includes financial implications of administering a trees on public property by law. We are requesting direction from council to draft a trees on public property by law and present that draft to council for consideration at a future meeting. And as if we are, if we are given support for the next step, we will work on updating the financial information and providing that information at the next at a, at a future meeting. And that is, that's all for me. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Matt. Thanks, a very good presentation. Good to have some images there to have a real clear understanding about what we're talking about here. So thanks for that report. Questions from council, Councilor McRae.
Thank you, Mayor Len. I certainly support having a public tree by law. I think it's long overdue. So I applaud everyone for bringing this forward for us to consider. I do have a question related, well, I did have a question, which was, have there been any challenges to date with public trees in rural areas being arbitrarily removed without permission? But the last photo in the slide sort of answered that question. Because I was sort of questioning whether or not we should be looking at rural as well as urban at the same time, rather than delaying rural until later. So have we seen some significant problems with the rural trees being removed or is this a one-off that we saw?
No, it's not a one-off. It is a, is it, it is an issue that we're having in urban as well as rural areas. I think the focus in the report that we tried to drill down on is that the permit process for, for tree removal is going to be a complicated process to put in place. And our thought was that perhaps we start with urban areas and focus the, the, the need to to obtain a permit before removal happens. Sort of test it out in the urban areas and then if that goes well, then apply that to the rural areas. However, the bylaw itself, I think it should apply to all trees regardless of where they are, if they are public trees. So we would still, we would still want all residents, regardless of where they are, to discuss any work with us before it happens. But we would waive the, the requirement to pay for a permit and just streamline the process for rural areas until such a time, we've got the additional staff or the additional experience to administer the full program.
Councilor McRae, follow on.
Yes, so what you're suggesting then is at least this proposed bylaw would at least protect existing rural trees that if someone was to go ahead and just knock them down, we'd have an opportunity to at least enforce replacement?
Yes, absolutely. That's.
Councilor Dunkmore?
Yeah, I think it's a long overdue bylaw and I want to thank Matt for bringing it forward. I want to thank Tony for all the work that her group does and, and pushing this forward and putting it on the agenda. I have a couple of concerns and first off, I was those, two of those pictures, I think, were from my ward where the trees were damaged and we're going to lose them. And the one that ended up having to come down. And, and I said, when I talked to the resident, and I'll reiterate this for you, Matt, so when you're putting this bylaw together, it's on your radar. Some contractors still operate under the guise of it's better to beg for forgiveness than ask for permission. And even when they say they're not going to take the tree down and they know they're not supposed to take the tree down. Oops, the tree came down. And the only way you correct that oops is to make sure when you assess financial compensation for this, it's heavy enough that they think twice about doing it by accident and asking for permission. So I would encourage you to move forward this, but make sure that the fines for taking a tree down when they were told not to are severe enough that they would think more than twice about doing it.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's very good advice.
Councilor Kitcher?
I thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to refer this back to staff and that they consult with the public in a broad way, not just from a lobby's group. And that they get input, especially from rural areas to about this tree policy. And I'd like to be done on CW Connect and advertise to the public before they create the tree policy. And also the financial costs that the public knows the financial costs of hiring extra staff for this. So I'd like to move forward to refer that.
Yeah, so we'll get, we're going to.
Still get all the other people to talk.
Yeah, we'll get through it and then we'll go back to that. I can imagine that, and I want Matt to talk to that because I can ima, I can imagine that that's part of the plan already. But we'll go through the councilors, but maybe you could just talk a little bit about that, Matt, that is there any public consultation that you anticipate as a result of creating this bylaw?
Yeah, absolutely. We had discussed that internally and certainly the option of putting it on Connect CW was discussed. And it's something we're very willing to do. And I'm happy to hear that direction from council. I was hoping to get a sense from councils, that's something they would want or not want and what level of public consultation they're looking for. But absolutely, we can, we can do that.
Yeah, so when we come to your motion, Kitcher, just you have a little bit of time now to think about it because that, if that's going to be already the approach that we're going to be taking with this, getting council direction to move ahead with it, it'll just speed up that process for extensive public consultation anyway. So think about that while I get the last couple of people and see if you still want to move ahead with that motion. Councilor McQuaid?
Thanks, Mayor. And thanks to both Tony and Matt for bringing these forward, this forward. It's, it's way overdue. Tony, just to give you a quick update, it was actually five years true tree counting. So you were, I was obviously very forgettable for three years. Anyhow, one of the questions I had, Matt, and, and is one of the things that we have been trying to, have been pushing for a number of years and it's finally happened is that boulevard tree planting is now allowed and it didn't used to be allowed. Are boulevard trees, do they have enough protection from sidewalks and the streets and everything that they are going to survive long term? Or do you have to be very specific about the types of trees you plant in the boulevard to ensure success?
That's a very good question. I think Tony had a, had a great slide and comment on that. The biggest challenge to trees, especially public trees in the boulevard are, are, are cars. And in areas where we've got curb and a more urban road cross section, our trees do better. Where cars are able to park on the boulevard, they will. That's just the nature of, of, of our car society. And so that's, that's the biggest challenge. Also, the second point you discussed is whether certain species are more appropriate, and that's absolutely true as well. We always try and pick our more hardy and salt tolerant species of trees, especially where where volumes of traffic are higher, where there's more people on the street and especially where there's risk of road salts and pollution getting onto the boulevard. So it's a combination of factors, but it's certainly the right tree in the right spot is what we're looking for.
Councilor McQuaid, follow on.
You're still on mute, Councilor McQuaid? You're still on mute, Councilor McQuaid?
Sorry. Yeah, the other question I had to do, had to do with the one acre or one hectare plot of land that is protected or greater than one hectare that is now protected. And if you're doing consultation for rural, is that going to be part of the discussion then, Matt, or is it, do we have to wait for county to get on board with that? Or what, how exactly is, what is the process there?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a good question. I think the onus is on us to let the county know when we believe a property owner should be contacting them to get a permit. But we, we're going to continue to be a customer service-based department. So if we don't get a call from the public, then we're not going to go out and investigate. So if we have a call for a property, if a resident has contacted us, then, then I think it's up to us to, to contact the appropriate people.
Councilor McQuaid?
Just one other quick question, Matt, if I could. There's a fairly large forested area along First Line as you approach South River Road in Alora. And it has had a lot of trees thinned out in the middle of it. Is that something that needs a permit? And is that, or can like, is individual trees protected in a, that's definitely, I would say it's one more, greater than one hectare. So I assume it's protected, but there's a lot of trees that have been knocked down in that lot. So I'm just curious what the.
That's another very good question. I'm actually pretty familiar with that property and the property owner. The township has a storm pond and a, and a small, I think it was one and a half acre ash woodlot. And we've removed our ash trees with the contractor and that property that's just to the east, that property owner has also removed many of their ash trees and they did receive, they did apply and receive a permit from the county to do that work.
Councilor Van Lewin has had to leave for an emergency situation. So he has left the meeting and he has informed the clerk of that. So that's where he is right now and hopefully he joins back up. Councilor Fosker?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Matthew, for a very excellent report. Mike, I'm very supportive of protecting our trees and probably having a public tree bylaw. The only one thing that concerns me, Matthew, is that we would, there's a proposal in the report to hire another staff person. And yet I haven't seen a, a business case for that person. Can you help me understand, Matthew, why we would not be able to have a tree bylaw and, and also implement it without having to hire one additional person?
Yes, so that, that additional staff is identified before we put this report together related to the public tree by law. And it was the intent that that staff person would be assisting with urban forestry programs and landscape architecture programs. Now that we've got a potential draft bylaw coming up, then it's an opportunity to to have that staff member trained to assess with this bylaw, the coordination and the inspections. If, if it's a matter of the bylaw being managed just with myself, I have quite a lot of other programs that I manage independently and it becomes a big time constraint. So one of the issues that, or one of the solutions that staff have discussed, and I believe is mentioned in the report, is contracting out the inspections related to an approved permit, contracting out those inspections to an arborist consultant firm. And the intent would be to, to try and incorporate the, the fees that would be incurred by that consultant in the cost of the permit so that it would not be a large expense for the township. But without starting that process, it's hard to make some definitive statements about what the costs are going to be.
Councilor Fosker, follow on.
Thank you, Mayor. Matthew, and thank you for your, your answer there. So I think what I hear you say is it's about enforcement, enforcing such a bylaw, and that's an important part of it, of course. But I'm still not hearing the rationale for the hire. We have, for example, Satnam available to do enforcement work. We also have a dozen or more roads operators who do snow plowing in the winter. I'm wondering why we couldn't have them summertime as part of the, you know, urban trees and so on. I, that's how things were done in the past. Is there any way we can train some of our snowplow operators in, in, in caring and managing trees? And, and Satnam being the enforcement piece on, on, on the tree bylaw? Is, is there any reason we couldn't have those people do this work rather than hiring one more person?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Andy because I think that, that question goes a little bit out of scope. We're talking about a tree moving ahead and then council's directed to move ahead with the bylaw. So we're going a little bit beyond Matt's scope here. So I'm going to turn this over to RKO.
Thank you, Mayor Linton. If council so desires to be looking at a tree bylaw to this magnitude, all municipalities that we've looked at, similar in looking at bylaws, do have enforcement people that are specifically rated for this. They're specifically educated in this field. We do not have bylaw, current bylaw officers. We do not have bylaw, current bylaw officers or public works, uh, staff uh, that would have the time or capacity or the education to be able to enforce this bylaw. And so therefore you're looking at an expertise that would need to be enforcing this. And that's part of the review and what we would bring back with regards to cost for permitting and cost for staffing uh, for enforcement and how we would go through that. And we do not have staff uh, just waiting around to, to do additional work.
Okay, um, Pat, you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, I guess from our department's perspective, um, until we launch the bylaw, we're not, we don't have no experiential data. How many permits will come in? Um, how complex will they be? And how much enforcement will be required versus compliance? So what we want to do is uh, obviously Matt will continue to do this work once it's um, started. But if the workload of the bylaw exceeds his available time, we have the opportunity to spend on a consultant uh, to assist with the inspections and compliance. And in the end, it's up to council to set the rates and fees on the permits. So um, the challenge being that if you uh, try to maybe recover all of the costs, the cost of a permit may be so high that there'll be non-compliance to actually apply for permits. So it is a balancing act, but we just wanted it this time in the financial report to state, yes, this could cost taxpayer funds in order for us to implement and enforce this bylaw. But as we've all viewed, there's very important reasons why we need to protect our tree canopy and our forests. So it is potentially going to be a cost to the taxpayers or the rates are set at a rate that all costs are covered. We need some experiential data to come back and tell you this. And we hope in our next round of report uh, with the actual bylaw, we can provide some options for council to take a look at. And we'll take a look at some uh, good estimates on what we think could potentially happen in our community. But we don't have that data yet.
Great, thanks, Pat. Yeah, I'm gonna, we'll, we'll turn to Council Kitteris in a sec. I just wanna, I'm not saying my two cents, but I'm completely supportive of this. This is, we've been, um, we've been thinking this for a long time. And this is something that we definitely need in, in our town as we grow. Um, we have to protect our, our urban canopy and our trees. And um, uh, good, that's been a good presentation uh, that's been put together uh, by uh, Matt and the team. And we, I definitely think this is something that is, that I'll support for sure. So Council Kitteris, um, now that you've heard that um, it's the intent to go out with widespread communication and engagement using uh, CW Connect, you still want to put your referral out as a motion?
Yes, more so.
Okay, so you have to be a little bit more specific as to you're referring it for what reason?
Um, I would like to refer it to get uh, public input from rural residents and also uh, public input for the uh, cost of implementation.
Sorry, you have to go a little further for me, so that I, that I know how to think this through. Are you asking for public input, input as to whether we want a bylaw? Or input on, on what that bylaw is?
Uh, input into what that bylaw is and what uh, the public, broader public and especially rural residents have to say about um, this tree policy. I'm, I'm, I'd like to be able to put the motion forward so I can actually discuss it a little bit because I'm just, I'm trying to say that we have more from an urban side, this uh, tree policy, but the rural, it's, I can see that they're going to extend it to the rural. And also from the taxpayers' point of view, the cost. So I would like to have the public have input for that when they bring it back so that we can see what the business case will be for the, for the, and what the actual costs are. Because it's pretty, it says financial implications, but it doesn't really actually, it's not nuts and bolts and we don't actually see it. And so I would like to know that when we, when they bring forward the uh, the policy. And I also would like to know what rural residents actually think about this because I'm in the rural, I could say most of these trees are in the ditch uh, where it should be, there should be a ditch, um, but there isn't because the farmer actually knows that that's not his property. So he doesn't plant crops there and it allows to go wild. And then all of a sudden, there's trees that are a hundred years old. Um, and so I'm just sort of saying there's a, it's, it's, it's much more nuanced than just we're, they're killing trees. Um, and so I would like to have public in, rural input into these trees. So I would like to have their say also. And so that there would be a public forum through CW Connect or some other way that the rural, some of them don't have the internet. So some way that they can uh, connect and get their voice in making this policy. So that's what I'm actually, I would like to just have those, those short things though. Basically, I would like to have rural input into this policy and also the cost input from the general public.
So sorry, um, in, in order for us to put a mo- uh, motion out there, we gotta know what it is. So what I'm struggling with, you, you, you really think that the public is going to provide input on the cost of this?
Well, I think the, the, the municipality, when they ask to have some guidelines so that the public can actually comment on, I mean, other than just saying we like it, they should have some, they, they, it's already saying there might be some costs here. I think that when it goes to the public, I would like the public to know what cost that would be so that then the public can comment on that. And the other part of it is, is I would like the rural residents to know what, what actually this will be. So it's part of also educating the rural that this is coming up because a lot of times this is an urban, more urban thing. So part of the CW Connect is that they'll know about this also. And they can comment. And I think that part is actually missing from this report, the more rural uh, residents.
Okay.
I would like them to be informed about this to comment on.
Yeah, okay, so I, I still don't personally understand the difference. I think we're going to go out to widespread engagement anyway, but there needs to be council direction to move forward with a, a, a bylaw first. So I don't see the difference, but that's okay. You put that forward and if people can understand what that, that referral is, I'll ask for a second. Counselor Foster, second in that. Any discussion on, on that referral?
Mayor, um, uh, further to Counselor Kitteris' motion, I, I, I just want to state, I guess, that I, I'm very much in favor of, of protecting our trees and having a tree bylaw. I think that's a good thing. Uh, what concerns me, as I've already stated, is, is the cost of implementation and in particular, the cost of hiring one more person. We have a bylaw enforcement officer. I don't believe you need to be a skilled arborist to do the enforcement piece. Uh, and secondly, we have a large crew of workers who, who, whose primary function is snow removal and public works. And I, I believe they could be part of the picture. And so my, my opposition here is, is not o- opposition to having a bylaw. It's opposition to hiring yet one more staffer. When I, I, I honestly believe, and I've heard nothing to the contrary, that uh, we have full capacity to implement this without an additional hire. And I think that needs to be part of the consultation that Counselor Kitteris is referring to. So I, I, I've seconded the motion. I'd like to get some public input as well as to whether the public wishes to pay for um, another staff person to implement this tree bylaw.
Any other comments? Counselor McCray?
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. I guess I'm a little confused as to what Counselor Kitteris is seeking. So what I'm appreciating is, I think he's concerned about whether or not there will be an opportunity for the public to provide feedback on this bylaw. What I'm assuming is that we proceed with getting the bylaw written up, which is what we're being asked to prove is to have a bylaw written up. And what I'd be in favor of is to then have a draft bylaw that is then put out there on, on Connect CW and other means for people to be able to provide feedback on what they think of the bylaw. Because until we actually have a bylaw in front of us, it's a little hard to figure out what should be in the bylaw. So I'd much prefer to have something written up that we can then send out to the public to get their feedback. Secondly, um, I don't think the intent of this discussion was to tie the employee, hiring another individual to staff, linking it to the actual bylaw. I think what we need to be discussing here is just the bylaw itself and not whether or not we need to hire another person. That will come when we're doing the budget discussions um, later this year or next year. Because we're talking about someone being hired in 2023. So I see that as a whole separate discussion and not tied to whether or not we actually need a tree bylaw. I think what we need to focus on is, as council, do we want to actually proceed with having a bylaw written up to then share with the public to get feedback? That is what I think the question is.
Counselor Dunn, follow on.
Yeah, I agree with Counselor McCray. We need to get public input, we need to have a bylaw for them to put input on. To, to say we need to stop it before we, we get public input, let's get um, in public input, what are we asking it for? So we have to put the, we've got the cart before the horse. We have to have a bylaw and then set the procedure. Matt always, already suggested that he would seek public input. If you want to make an amendment to the motion to say that a public input process to be created with it, I'm fine with that, but referring it back to staff means we don't deal with this now. They're going to come back, what are they going to get people to comment on? That's, that's the biggest problem with the referral. I'd prefer you to put an amendment in to say that public uh, input must be engaged in this and let's get the bylaw passed.
Counselor Macalay?
Thank you. I um, kind of agree with what counselors uh, Dunsmore and McCray said in that I think what we should be taking to the public is a bylaw, draft bylaw for comment. Um, but on the other hand, I also agree that it can include, and I think the two motions should be kind of tied together. So I think an amendment to the original motion is probably the, the appropriate first step. The, the coming forward with the draft bylaw should include uh, consultation with rural as well as urban. And it should include potential costs um, of what it's going to cost to implement the bylaw. And that can all be part of the public consultation, but it needs to dra, it needs to have the bylaw developed before we can come up with any of that, I think. So I, as I say, I kind of agree a little bit with everybody and uh, that makes me perfect middle of the road.
Um, yeah, no, I think all of us are saying the same, a lot of the same things. I mean, obviously, um, there has to be public consultation and that's going to happen. And we'll go out to draft like we do with all our bylaws and make sure we go out to see them, you connect and ask them specific questions. Um, so that's the way we, that's the way we do things and, and this is going to be no different. Um, so I think that's built, that's built into the process and Matt has, uh, Matt has heard our comments here today. Um, so you know, I think all of us appreciate that there has to be a public input on this. And we've never go forward with something like this today. So um, I know that is built in. All we're asking today is that um, council has an appetite to move forward with a public tree bylaw. Um, and then based on that, we're going to go out to consultation. We'll make sure that there's a draft bylaw and that there's going to be opportunities for people to have input costing. All the financial piece of it will be included in that. That's the way we do things. It's, it's, you go out with a full report. All we're asking right now is council wants to move ahead and direct staff to move ahead to move towards a public tree bylaw. So I, I will be supporting referral because I think we have all we need and all the questions that we're asking right now are going to be part of the process. Counselor Kitteris, any follow?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, referring it back to the, to the staff is exactly what this motion, the original motion was. But I wanted to have specific things in there, which it didn't say in this document. And that was the rural and also the financial implications. So all, all, what you just said, it is what I would want. But it isn't actually in this document. Um, and that's all I'm just saying, why I'm referring it back to them to draft it. And so when they draft it, um, the new information of having it as a draft bylaw and then doing public from Counselor McCray, I think that's probably a very, very good idea. Uh, and I would be totally for that. And so, um, so I'm not, this whole refer whole motion was, but I wanted certain features to be uh, in there, the rural and also the that you've said that that's what's going to be, they will understand that. And I, 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 if that's what it's going to be, but it wasn't segments were going to be in it, then it doesn't really have to be referred if it is actually is going to be in there. I understood that way, but it wasn't clear from the documents that I read here that that was going to be done. The public consultations, the uh, rural, especially the rural component of it and also the actual costs. And so I support totally Counselor McCray's idea of the draft and then the public consultation.
So are you um, removing your motion to refer if all those things are included?
Absolutely.
Sorry, I just have to confer with the clerk to make sure I'm doing this appropriately. So if, if Counselor Kitteris uh, removes his referral, does Counselor Foster have to agree or how does that work? Okay, so what if we make a amend, a change to the recommendation that says, following a public consultation process, the council of the township of Center Wellington instructs community services staff to draft a trees on public property bylaw and present the draft to council for consideration of a future meeting? Will we be okay with that? Well. Okay, so the way this has to happen is, is Counselor Kitteris and both, and Counselor Foster both have to agree with, to withdraw um, that referral and then we can move ahead and um, put, get a mover and a seconder for the recommendation as amended. So Counselor Foster, um, would you agree to remove the referral?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would, I would agree to uh, remove as long as it's clear that uh, the uh, my expectation would be that we'll see a more fulsome discussion of the cost of implementation and particularly the cost of hiring that person. And as it sits, as Counselor Kitteris pointed out, right now the report can, includes the hire. And I haven't in the business case for that. So yes, Mayor, I would withdraw as long as it's very clear to staff that any future hiring of a person has to come back to council. Right now, it's still in the report.
Yeah, it always comes back to council. So I think that, that motion is withdrawn. So I'm going to put forward um, a recommenda, amended recommendation. And I'm going to reread, reread it again, that following a, a a community consultation period, the council of the township of Center Wellington instructs community services staff to draft a trees public property bylaw and present the draft to council for consideration of a future meeting. Mover for that, please. Counselor Foster, second in by Counselor Dunn, for all in favor? And that's carried, thank you very much. And that's exciting. Thank you very much, Tony, if you're still here, yeah, you're still here. Thanks for uh, speaking to us today and, and thanks, Matt, for all the work to put uh, put that report together and all the other work that you do do. Uh, make sure that we, tomorrow, we're going to have a healthier tree canopy than we have today. Moving on to seven point two, the South Fergus Master Environment Moving on to seven point two, the South Fergus Master Environmental Servicing Plan, uh, second, secondary plan. Significant piece of work here, um, and we are going to pass it off to our managing director of planning and development, Brett Sammon. Welcome, Brett.
Thank you, Mary Linton. Uh, this report, as you noted, deals with the South Fergus Master Environmental Servicing Plan and Secondary Plan. Those are the comprehensive studies that are needed to bring the land in the south end of Fergus uh on stream for future development. The lands were added to the urban boundary in two thousand and three, but identified as a secondary planning area. Uh, it's one of two in the township. The first one that's already been completed is the Northwest Fergus Secondary Plan. That was finalized in two thousand and thirteen. Uh, and then since that time, we've been talking about moving forward with the secondary plan for the South End lands. Um, we started off by uh bringing the South End Master Environmental Servicing Plan and Secondary Plan uh into our twenty eighteen capital budget with uh partial funding. Uh, and then our twenty eighteen development charges uh study included full funding for the, uh, the studies as a growth related cost. Um, we weren't able to uh, to make any progress at the time on the terms of reference uh before the provincial government uh changed. And the new government uh started talking about revising the Development Charges Act and making changes that would have jeopardized the ability to fund these studies from development charges. That's when if council recalls that Gary Scanlon from Watson and Associates made presentations to council about the uh community benefits charge. Um, so for a couple of years, it looked like the community benefits charge was going to fundamentally alter the way that these kind of uh growth related studies are funded. Uh, however, by the fall of two thousand and twenty, we were back to uh the province uh agreeing that this kind of study could be funded one hundred percent from uh development charges. And so the Development Charges Act we have today does allow us again to fund this a hundred percent. Um, so our draft development charges bylaw includes a provision for uh funding this project. And we've entered into, or proposed an agreement with the, uh, a number of the landowners uh for this work uh to proceed. Um, so you have attached to the report uh the agreement itself. And the way the agreement is structured, the participating landowners would be hiring and retaining the consulting team uh to do the work. And the township would then reimburse them for the cost to complete the, the studies. And that will come from our development charge reserves. Uh, the township also retains the ability to hire uh other consultants that we may need for peer review. And we would establish a technical advisory committee uh that would include township staff and consultants, uh, the G R C A and probably the county. And also perhaps given Highway six, we would invite the Ministry of Transportation to uh, to sit on the technical advisory committee. Um, the consulting team hired by the developer, developer group or the landowner group will be responsible for all of the public uh engagement, including ensuring that this part of the process meets the uh environmental assessment requirements as, as necessary. Um, so I just wanted to, to comment on the need to move forward with this. There's policies in uh the provincial policy statement and in the growth plan that uh talk about having a long-term supply of land for different uh uses, including houses, recreational uses, uh, employment uses, and uh that can be up to twenty-five years. Uh, our current supply is quite limited. There's only one uh large commercial property left uh in the Fergus Urban Center. That's in the South End, but that's the only piece that's not developed, especially with the development of the Freshco Plaza last year. So, and then in terms of housing, uh, the majority of our housing uh supply for the foreseeable future for Fergus is all in the Northwest Fergus Secondary Plan area. So in order uh to prepare for a broader supply of these different types of uses, we need to get started on the secondary planning process because that's a process itself that will take uh a few years and uh will pave the way for the servicing of the South End lands, which will, which will take additional time. Um, so we've created this uh agreement and the agreement includes a number of attachments uh that also uh embodies the terms of reference, uh, the C V's of all the consulting teams and a copy of the agreement amongst the landowners uh themselves. Uh, a related work that we're asking for permission to proceed with is the municipal class EA to uh upgrade the Union Street Pumping Station. Union Street Pumping Station is uh, is necessary to, to provide sanitary servicing for the lands in the South End of Fergus and other lands in Fergus. And so we're uh, we're also recommending that uh council give us permission to proceed with the class EA. That'll be done concurrently with this uh secondary plan work, but that will be a township, uh, a township project. Um, I should say that it's a, it's a team effort to bring this report and uh uh Andy and Dan and Colin, uh, the full senior management team has been involved in uh bringing this forward. We have Dave Austin uh joining the meeting who represents the landowners group uh to give a brief presentation. Uh, when there's questions, uh, we may need Colin and Dan to help out with uh engineering and, and financing uh questions. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Brett, for that. And I know this has been a lot of work for the full team. So at this point, I will turn it over to Dave from M H D C Planning uh to go through your presentation. Welcome, Dave.
Good afternoon, Mary Linton. Thank you and uh thanks for the opportunity. Um, I believe I can share my screen. Uh, trick is finding the presentation, which I never can.
Dublin is also ready to share it if you want.
Uh, that would be great. Yes, that, thank you.
Thanks, Dublin. Thanks, Dave.
Uh, so again, thank you, Mary Linton, uh, members of committee. Just a very brief presentation um this afternoon. I do also want to thank Brett and, and uh Andy and Colin and Dan and just everyone uh with regard to the process. Uh, we've been working with the landowners and with our project team now for uh some time to get this coordinated. Uh, so the study can get moving and uh, and the background work has been underway. We actually started uh to make sure we caught the seasonal field work. Um, so this afternoon, uh, just wanted to give a brief overview of the study area, which I'm, I'm certain that you're all aware of, uh, some highlights on the timelines and just quick summary conclusions. So, uh, next slide, please. Is it, is the slide moving for you?
Yeah, we're just pulling it back up. I see we have two folks on the uh, on the filter screen now. Yeah, there we go. Enable editing. There we go. Yep.
I think well, well, it's coming up. The next slide that I was going to show really was just the study area of South Fergus. Uh, both the lands on the east and the west side. We're looking at about a hundred and fifty-two hectares, uh, which will undertake um detailed studies on uh environmental engineering, heritage, uh, land use planning, parks planning, and all of the items that are generally identified in the township O P official plan uh necessary for the completion of the master environmental servicing plan and the secondary plan. So at the end of the day, there'll be a, a servicing plan that will combine all of the environmental considerations and a land use plan that will be a component of the secondary plan that will provide direction on specific land use designations, location of parks, location of trails and uh any other special requirements that are necessary for the development of the lands. Uh, so we started, as I mentioned, with uh base aerial photo information that was just taken uh this year. And uh the mapping that you see here is uh a combination of the township official plan mapping and information from the G R C A. And this, again, as a baseline, uh, will then be uh studied and assessed and confirmed through the detailed environmental fieldwork and consultation with the township, uh, the county and the uh, uh Conservation Authority. Uh, the next slide is, uh, just represents our project team. We've put together a, a team of experts um from engineering, um, environmental, uh, archaeological and uh financial planning and then ourselves uh working on the aspects of the secondary plan and land use planning and will be the key contact and coordinator with uh the township and the technical advisory committee. Uh, next slide. Uh, this just gives you a really high level of the timeline that we're working toward. Uh, we're uh here this afternoon in support of the staff recommendation and moving forward at which uh point we will then immediately send out a notice of study commencement to make the public aware of uh the study beginning. Uh, we'll coordinate with township staff on how we communicate and consult and include of uh the county's website and connect program uh and other means as, as we see the, the best approach to connect to the community. Uh, summer in the ballpark of summer uh twenty twenty-one, uh, we'll, we'll have the background and existing conditions uh all pulled together and uh land use options available for review. Uh, in fall twenty twenty-one, we would have a, a further public consultation uh where we would uh present the draft uh master environmental servicing plan and secondary plan. And that's all leading to about a year from now, uh, bringing a final report forward uh for consideration. Um, and then uh the notice of study completion following that. So these steps uh follow the uh class, uh, the municipal class environmental assessment requirements and also the Planning Act requirements associated with um secondary plan uh matters as well. Uh, next slide. So just in summary, uh, building on what Brett had mentioned about uh the, the growth planning uh for the community. Uh, the official plan identifies the need for the completion of the studies that are being proposed. Uh, the master environmental uh servicing plan and secondary plan. Uh, we've worked through a terms of reference. Uh, those terms of reference have been reviewed and, and approved for completion of the master environmental circus and secondary plan and approved um uh through consultation and discussion uh with township staff. And I know there's uh input provided um from their end as well as uh experts associated with the township. So uh we have a solid basis for completion of the study uh wrapped in the official plan requirements and uh typical practices associated with these types of studies. And our team uh will work in collaboration with the township on the completion of the study. Uh, all of the public consultation and uh, and set up uh technical advisory uh committee meetings and also set up um ongoing study uh, study update meetings uh with township staff. And so again, just thank you for this opportunity. Uh, on behalf of all the landowners, we appreciate uh all of the efforts that have gone into uh bringing this forward this afternoon. Uh, we support the recommendations of staff and we look forward to getting the studies uh uh moving along and presenting updates uh to council and uh, and seeing South Fergus uh move forward with the vision uh that's uh intended as far as a growth component in supporting the broader community. And happy to answer any questions as well, uh, myself.
Thanks very much, Dave, and thanks, Brett. So again, there's a lot of study and a lot of work that has to be done at this point, but um it's really important work for us to uh establish a real solid design for South Fergus. And, and this is the first step uh going forward with that. So it's, it's important work. Um, and I know this took a significant team effort to get to this point, but there is recognition that there's a lot of work that has to be done and lots of opportunities for consultation throughout that process. Uh, turning over for questions uh from staff, I'll go with uh Counselor Foster first.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions for uh managing director of planning, uh Brett Salmon. Uh, Brett, I, I noticed in the report it's uh potentially as many as thirteen hundred and seventy uh new homes or new units. Um, now I realize we don't know the mix of units, whether they're all detached homes, et cetera, but nevertheless, um, there's potential, you know, for thirteen hundred or more new homes. And I'm wondering, given our discussion about attainable housing, whether uh that, that could mean as many as thirteen hundred attainable housing units. In addition, you know, if each one had a, had a secondary dwelling unit there. So I guess I'm wondering, Brett, um, in terms of uh this EA, will, will the EA take into account the size of the, uh, basically the plumbing needed to, uh, you know, the, the water and wastewater infrastructure? I mean, um, will the A, will the EA look at the potential for uh attainable housing units? Any as each one of these almost fourteen hundred homes, which effectively would have the impact of doubling uh the number of units and changing the, the required water and wastewater infrastructure to accommodate it. So I guess really, Brett, I'm wondering, will the EA uh consider that in uh, in, in this study? The uh, the potential for additional attainable units?
Yeah, um, yeah, I think, I think the short answer is yes. That, that's something that we, um, when, when you look at adding uh accessory apartments in uh sort of the areas that are already built up. I think the, the presumption that the province makes is you're um replacing population that used to be there that isn't anymore because the size of households decline. Uh, but definitely you're correct. In, in new areas, um, there may be, you know, a percentage of, of houses that get built with uh, with basically two additional units. And uh, yeah, that, that needs to be examined in the servicing studies that are, are done.
Counselor Foster, follow?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, my second question is in regards to possible conflicts of interest, uh, Brett. We're being asked to execute an agreement with five different uh numbered companies and, and operating companies. And yet we don't really know who the uh, the shareholders, the directors, the owners are. Um, can, is there a way we can get a list of, of all shareholders, directors and officers of these five companies that we're being asked to enter into an agreement with?
Uh, I, I honestly can't say I know how to answer that question. I honestly can't say I know how to answer that question. The principals' names are on the agreement that you see because they've signed it amongst the landowners. We got legal advice when we prepared this agreement. And that's, you know, often the case that our agreements that we execute are signed by somebody who's an authorizing signing officer of the company, and that's really what the municipality looks for is ensuring that the person signing it has the authority. As far as any other conflict, if you're thinking conflict amongst councillors, then it's up to the individual councillor to declare that conflict if they have one.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you. And there lies exactly my concern, Brett, which is, as councillors, we're expected to declare a conflict of interest if indeed one exists. And yet here we have five different companies, you know, five shareholders or more. I don't know how many shareholders. We have sets of shareholders. We have directors. We have owners. We have officers of five different companies. So how can I know if I have a conflict of interest if I don't know who all the officers, directors, and shareholders are? That concerns me a bit, Brett. I simply don't know who these folks are.
Yeah, and I think what Brett was speaking about is if there is any, if there is any councillors who have disciplinary interests, we had that opportunity at the beginning of this meeting. So you know, it's the responsibility of every councillor to state that. So I think we've gone through that process, and that's why we do that every, that's why we do that every time we meet. And if nobody declared their disciplinary interest, then the fact is that nobody has a disciplinary interest with this item. So if they do, then they're on the hunt for it. So it's a personal responsibility. Anything beyond that, councillor Foster, I think that's been, that's been finalized. So I'll give you one more comment.
Thank you, Mayor. And you're quite correct. It's incumbent on each of us to declare conflict, but I'm just pointing out, Mayor, that how can I know if I have a conflict if I don't know who these people are? And that, that's my concern, and I'm surprised we wouldn't have a fulsome list of officers, directors, and shareholders so that I can see if I have a conflict. It's impossible to determine otherwise.
Well, I think if you were involved in any of these companies and you knew that these companies were signing on behalf of you, then you'd know that you had a conflict. So I think that, that question is already answered. There's nothing else to answer on that one. Councillor Maclean.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question, Brett. Just with the Northwest Fergus secondary plan, the landowner paid, fully funded the, the study. And here, because there are multiple owners, we're doing it through development charges. Did we make any attempt to ask the different owners to pay their share? Because it just seems to me that it's, if one themselves, then the rest should be paying it as well instead of the, instead of us doing it through development charges.
I think there's been some, some discussion about, about that amongst the landowners, but the fact is, we, we have some, but not all of the participating landowners at the table with this agreement. And back in, in 2018, when we made the decision to put this forward as a development charge funded study, that was on the understanding that not every single one of the landowners were going to join on and participate by funding the study. But the study, in terms of timing and meeting our obligations for for a land supply of the different types, we need to move forward. So development charge funding of growth-related studies is, is the means by which we've done this. Back to the Northwest Fergus secondary plan, originally it had been our intent, and early days, we did have that secondary plan funded from development charges initially. But our challenge at the time, given the rate of, of development back then, is we simply didn't have the, the reserves available in our development charge reserves for studies to be able to pay for it. So at that point, the developer that, in that case being Sorbera, wanted to proceed badly enough for their own timing that, that they offered to pay for the study in full, and they were the only landowners. So it was an easy, an easy decision to make. When you have multiple properties, like we do with South Fergus, it's a lot more, a lot more challenging. This avoids the need to sort of, you know, create a complicated model of assigning costs to, I think there's a total of seven different, different properties and and property ownerships that would have to be divided on a percentage basis. This is the most expedient way to, to get it done. And again, it's, our Development Charges Act provides for this type of study to be 100% funded from development charges now. So so that's, that's the, the approach we've taken here.
Councillor Maclean, follow on?
Thank you. Okay, I, I, I think we, you know, it'd be great if we had a policy that applied to everyone, I guess, but I understand why. My second question, though, is somewhat related, I guess, in that we have five landowners, and at the end of all of this, we're going to come out with a secondary plan. And the secondary plan, after going through the environmental servicing, et cetera, may prove to be more beneficial to one landowner or two landowners than the other three. And what happens if there are, you know, disagreements at that point after it's already paid for, and the landowners don't agree with what's proposed? Is there a legal, this, this document that I looked through didn't seem to have any legal way to force them to follow whatever is concluded at the end of the plan?
Well, a secondary plan at the end of the day becomes an amendment to our official plan that we administer, that any then subsequent applications will, will have to, to conform to. And I, and I suppose it's possible that down the road, we get, we get into a conflict with certain developers' application that, that staff might think, or or one of the developers in the group may be not happy with the overall direction. And I guess they would still have the right, like any other landowner, to file appeals with local planning appeal tribunal if that was the case. But the developers amongst themselves do have their own agreement, and perhaps Dave Aston can answer more specifically about the unification amongst the developers that are party to this agreement. But otherwise, it's the, it would be the normal planning process.
Dave, do you want to add anything there?
Through Marilyn, I think Brett's done a good job describing it. We've been, been working with the landowners. They have an understanding of the process and what, what it means to be working together. I think they're all just very focused on moving the study forward because they see the importance of the study and the timing as it relates to what that means in, in the plan. I would just suggest that there's, again, in, in working with the township and the technical advisory committee, it's, the preferred or the final plan is going to be the plan that is achieving, you know, the best interest in the community. And that, that would be the goal for everyone to see this move forward.
Thanks, Dave. Councillor Kitchen?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions. The first question I have is on page ninety-six and ninety-seven, and then also just what Brett just said. I'm just wondering who joint venture is. Because it has it as part of the thing, and it's not listed in the signatures. And then there also is, he just said there were seven property owners, but I only see five listed. So that's my first question. I'm wondering, who are the other two? And who is joint venture? The other question I have is, I think this is basically for Dan. And that's about the financing, like, I remember when we allocated three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars as a consultant for this planning in 2018. So and at that time, I always was wondering, why are we financing the report? And now it charges. So are, how is it going to work with the development charges and for budgeting in the future for this plan? If we're, like, how, how are they going to pay for it, the developers? Not just, but what we've already taken the taxpayers to pay for this. So I'm just wondering, Dan, how does that work? So the first one's, I guess, is for Brett, and the second one's for Dan.
Yeah, so just pose a question, and whoever makes sense to answer it. I think probably Brett makes sense to answer those questions, but Brett, if you wanted to take it down.
Yeah, so on the, on the question of the landowners, there's, there's five, there's five people signed to this agreement. There, there are seven separate parcels of land in the, in the study area. That's what I was referring to. Seven, some of them, there's shared ownership between more than one of the parcels. But, but there are seven separate parcels of land in the study area. In terms of the question of financing, I think Dan can add, if I get this wrong, but we, we we showed three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in the 2018 budget. That was funded by development charges, not by taxpayers, by development charges. At the time, I think there would have been, you know, ten percent of that would have come from, from tax dollars because DC's at the time only funded ninety percent. What we've provided for in the Township Development Charge Background Study, that was the subject of the public meeting on February eighteenth, I believe, is for the study costs as we know them today, plus an allowance for peer review being funded 100% by development charges because that the latest changes to the Development Charges Act that I referred to in my introductory remarks. They make provision for 100% funding of this kind of study from development charges. So the, the agreement provides for us to reimburse the developers for the cost. So Mr. Aston, his team will prepare invoices for his clients, and then those will be submitted to us for payment out of development charges and, and finance staff will vet them to make sure that they're legitimate costs for the study before the payment is made. Again, I welcome Dan if he has anything to add.
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Thanks. Through Marilyn, Brett is correct in how he described the process. I just want to make note that the 10% that was funded through taxation of this project in the 2018 budget will be reversed through the 2022 budget. So we'll ensure at the end of the day that no tax dollars went towards the study that it is, in fact, 100% DC-funded.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying because that's an important point that this is the growth paying for growth. And the taxpayers aren't going to be able to hook for any of this talk. So appreciate that. Councillor Kitchen, follow on?
Thank you, Mayor. I, from, this is for Brett. I don't really clearly understand. You didn't answer who joint venture is, who's on this piece of paper. I see that the other B, C, and D, those are the five signatures on this. But I don't see anything about joint venture, and I don't know who they are. And I was just wondering if you could clarify like, who they are, like, and if they're not signing this, and they're, like, who are, like, why are they on it?
Dave, can you clarify who is joint venture, Dave?
Yeah, through you, Marilyn. Joint venture is the landowners that will be signing the agreement, and the purpose of that separate joint venture agreement was through discussion with the township to try and find a way to simplify the approach to managing the financial component. So rather than the township receiving a number of different invoices and requests for payments from all of the landowners on the agreement, the township requested that the landowners form, and they called it a joint venture. So that the, there was one point of contact associated with the financial arrangement. So the joint venture is the same group of, of landowners that will be signing the agreement. And, and just sorry, Marilyn, to answer the other question, the, the other two landowners, there's an existing home near the high school. And then there's another part, and that's, and then there's another part that's adjacent to Highway Six, and though on the west side of Highway Six, and that property owner has given permission for monitoring to occur, but is not participating financially in the costs. So both of those landowners are are aware, but not participating financially in the cost to complete the study. And that's why they're not part of the agreement at this time.
Thanks for that clarification, Dave.
Councillor Dunmore?
Yeah, so since we have the joint venture group, does that mean we'll get one subdivision plan or five different ones? How is that going to look going forward? So I guess that's for Brett. And then I, the other question, you can answer them both, and then I'm done. And that's, when will we see those subdivision agreements? So 2022 is the EA to be done. At what point do we start looking for ground to be broke?
Well, that, the second question's a hard one to answer, councillor Dunmore. This is, you know, the secondary plan process itself is, is a long one. And that's going to go, you know, until midway through 2022. I guess, in theory, they could, after we have a secondary plan adopted by council, start making applications for subdivisions, but the, really, the biggest challenge is extending the services. So the, you know, intended outcome would be from, from servicing analysis that's been done in the past. It'll mean truck sanitary sewer gets extended along Wealth Road up from the Union Street Pumping Station. So really, before that subdivisions go ahead, we have to some, have some idea of how that infrastructure is going to get paid for too. So there'll be some other work, but you know, in theory, conditional subdivisions could start to happen. You know, the challenge is the majority of the residential land is at the end of the pipe and not the beginning of it. So there may be some residential development on the west side of the highway, but there'll be, you know, a significant amount of commercial and and other employment generating land uses as well in that area. So that, that, that part's a bit of a challenge. And I'd forgotten with my answer what your first question was.
Will we get five separate subdivision agreements? Are we going to get one from the, from the group? The joint ventures?
Dave, Dave might be a better answer. In theory, any owner can apply individually for a property, but it would certainly, you know, there's common ownership or common parties amongst the different groups. So we may very well groups. So we may very well see joint properties up, but I, Dave's a better off uh answering that one.
Thanks, Brett. Through you. Oh, Dave, did you wanna speak to that?
Sure, sorry, through Mayor Linton. I, I expect there'll be more than one subdivision application uh through the process, just because of the number of parcels and, and the owners. And probably at a, at a minimum, there would be uh, uh, three separate applications.
Thanks, Dave. Uh, Counselor McCray?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Lynn. Um, I tend to be a bit of a futurist, so I'm looking out to when we're gonna be a city of fifty-two thousand people and what that might look like. I'm thinking about the loss of farmland, uh sprawl, the increasing time it's gonna get, take to travel through our community. And also I'm thinking about the increasing public interest about the five to fifteen minute walkable communities. And I'm wondering, when I look at this large parcel of land, would this be an opportunity to start thinking differently instead of thinking of single-family dwellings? To start thinking about going up rather than out? Thinking also that the province is probably gonna come back and tell us, oh, you need to add more people to your community than what we've told you to date. So could we look at maybe this being a community where it's walkable? So you have, say, more ground floor commercial with residences above. We're looking at having buildings at a varying height from three to five stories. Where we can very easily add more people if the province comes back and says you need more people. So we're not having to sprawl further out and take more farmland. It will also be more economical in terms of when you have greater densification, you don't have as many sewer lines and other utilities. I don't know, I just look at this, is, is there an opportunity to be thinking of the future and how we approach this? Because also if we're going up, we have more opportunity to address attainable housing. So that means more apartments, condos. I just see here's an opportunity to do something different. Is that something that we could focus on in looking at this? This new um secondary plan?
Yeah, good comments, uh, Counselor McCray. I think that's exactly the purpose of the secondary plan is to, some of the, the points that you raised are really good and we wanna make sure that they're dealt with. So I'll let Brett speak to that.
Well, certainly, uh, from what we've got to build with here, the, there's uh you know, McQueen Boulevard is gonna be a major uh east-west corridor. Um, I think in our growth strategy, there was a recommendation about a node at the corner of uh McQueen and Highway six. Certainly, there's you know, there uh, the makings of that, we already have a large commercial designation on the, on the south side of that. We've got um Guelph Road, Second Line, Scotland Street, all of which are um, you know, future collector roads. Uh, likely, and we may have another east-west road that bisects uh the property, depending on where uh MTO will allow to access. So those kind of boulevards are definitely all the kind of place where we would wanna see um mixed use or, or higher density. And in fact, our growth strategy did uh, you know, set the target density for this area a little bit higher than what we, what we would see in, in other, in other places. And you do have, uh, because of the shopping node that is there, you've got the ability to have people within walking distance of theirs and, you know, other, other services. So definitely agree that those are things that we can look at.
Okay, thanks, thanks very much. Counselor Kittredge?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a question. In these plans, they, they, they say thirteen hundred jobs, but it's not outlined. Like, we've been talking about, you know, attainable housing and, but where's, where exactly is that thirteen hundred jobs? Like, how, how is this parcel, this huge parcel of land gonna be divvied up to industrial, commercial, employment lands and residential? So is, is that like further down on the line or like, cause you, you do claim thirteen hundred jobs. That's a lot of jobs.
Yeah, I mean, that, the purpose of the secondary plan is to do the work uh and look at the mix of, of uses in detail. Uh, but we did early on when the lands were uh, were brought into the urban boundary uh years ago, we we did, we did it with the intent that the land here would be a mix of both employment and residential. Obviously, with frontage on Highway six, you're gonna see opportunity for commercial development. Um, so the number of jobs I quoted was just based on, you know, an approximate number of uh, using the numbers that the county of Wellington would have used. You know, a few years ago in their estimates of yield based on the typical density of uh employment, uh land generating development. Um, I think it's something like uh twenty-five jobs per hectare if it's industrial designated and thirty-five if it's highway commercial and applying that to a portion of the land here. Say, and, and the residential was done the same way. Uh, what I think you know, is likely to be different, um, post-COVID. Uh, there's gonna be, you know, the retail uses are probably less desirable. And things like uh business parks, style development that is more dense in terms of the number of jobs per hectare than what industrial land quote unquote used to be is what we're gonna see here. So we do have an opportunity to increase the kind of uh both employment and residential density than what we might have seen ten years ago.
Great, thanks so much, uh, Council. Um, we've been at this for three hours now, so I'm gonna call a five-minute break uh before we call this one to question. Um, so uh, we'll start back up here at five minutes after four, okay?
Okay. So I'll call this meeting back to order and just uh let the counselors know that Counselor Van Lewin is back on the call. So uh, just wanted to make sure that's reflected in the minutes. Um, so I have a recommendation here that the council, the township of Center Wynton authorized the mayor's first to execute an agreement between the corporation and the participating landowners to provide for the completion of the South Fergus Master Environmental Servicing Plan and secondary plan and that the council direct staff should proceed with a municipal class environmental assessment for the expansion of the Union Street West, the wastewater pumping station to service future growth. And the Fergus Urban Center to be funded as outlined in the report PLN two thousand twenty-one dash zero six. I have a mover for that recommendation, please. Counselor Dunsmore, seconded by Counselor McCray. Uh, all in favor? Oppose?
Point of order, point of order, Mayor, please.
Carry.
Point of order, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead. Point of order. It's carried, but point of order after the vote. Go ahead.
Oh, you, you didn't call for a discussion, sir. We, you, you've asked for a mover and a secondary, there was no discussion. I would have liked to uh discuss this matter.
I'm just curious as to what we've been doing for the past hour.
Well, you, you've had a motion on the table and you've called a vote with no discussion. That's, that's, that's uh, that you know, you, how can, you, you gotta, you gotta call for discussion once you have a motion on the floor. You didn't. In any case, Mayor, I wanna point out uh I've abstained. Mayor, I have abstained from this vote. Um, and I'd like to call for a recorded vote on this matter. Uh you, Mayor, you've misapprehended my concern about uh uh who these officers and directors are. We, we don't know who they are. And it's not just pecuniary conflicts of interest. Uh there's presumably five different companies, several landowners. We don't know who these folks are. I've asked for a list of officers and directors and shareholders, um, and none is forthcoming. And on that basis, I have abstained. And uh, I wish, I would have liked to have seen additional discussion. Once you had a motion and a secondary on the floor, nevertheless, you called the vote. I'm abstaining and I call for a recorded vote on this matter.
So we'll get, so the takeaway there is we'll get to the carrying to our first to go through a recorder vote process. Um, and so, and I just have to remind you, Counselor Potter, you have to uh sit a bit uh further away from your camera, because all I can see is your face and your shoulders, so I can't even tell if your hand's up. Um, so I couldn't tell how you voted in that last one. So it's good that we're going to record a vote. Uh, so I'll leave it to our first to go through the recorder vote process. Okay?
Uh, through you, Mayor Linton, Counselor Van Lewin?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Abstention. Don't know who these people are.
Counselor McElwain?
Yes.
Counselor McCray?
Yes.
Counselor Kittredge?
I think I'll abstain also.
Counselor Dunsmore?
Yes.
And Mayor Linton?
Yes.
That does in fact carry.
Okay, thanks and good work um to Brett, the whole team, um, and to Dave. Thanks for joining us today, Dave. And feel free to stay for the rest of our council if you so choose, but otherwise you can leave if you have anything else to do today. Moving on to, yeah, thanks, Dave. Moving on to seven point three demolition control application for four ninety-one Wynton Road. And I'll turn it over to a chief building official, Randy. Welcome, Randy.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Linton. Good afternoon.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Linton. Good afternoon.
Uh, sorry, Randy, you're just, you just got magically muted accidentally. It wasn't me, I promise.
Start from, start from the beginning again, if you would.
Uh, okay. Uh, uh, good afternoon, uh, members of council, Mayor Linton. Uh, before you today is a demolition control application for four ninety-one Wellington Road eighteen. Uh, that's the, uh, it's property across from the, the OPP station there. Uh, the
I think I'll abstain also.
Councillor Dunsmore?
Yes.
And Mary Linton?
Yes.
That does in fact carry.
Okay, thanks, and good work to Brett, the whole team, and today. Thanks for joining us today, Dave. And feel free to stay for the rest of our council if you so choose, but otherwise, you can leave if you have anything else to do today. Moving on to... Yeah, thanks, Dave. Moving on to 7.3 demolition control application for 491 Wellington Road. And I'll turn it over to a chief building official, Randy. Welcome, Randy.
Thank you, Mary Linton, good afternoon.
Sorry, Randy, you just got magically muted accidentally. It wasn't me, I promise. Start from, start from the beginning again, if you would.
Okay. Good afternoon, members of council, Mary Linton. Before you today is a demolition control application for 491 Wellington Road 18. That's the, it's property across from the OPP station there. The application is to demolish a one-story, 900-square-foot, single-detached dwelling with the intention for the owners to build a new house on the property. The house was built in 1965. It is not recorded in the township of Centre Wellington Municipal Heritage Register, and it is not designated under Part IV of the Ontario Heritage Act. And I would be pleased to take any questions you may have on the application.
Thanks, Randy. Any questions from council? Okay, I will read the recommendation that the council, the township of Centre Wellington, approved the issuance of a demolition permit to demolish the single-detached dwelling located at 491 Wellington Road 18, former township of Nicholls. If I have a mover for that, please? Councillor McRae, seconded by councillor McIlwain, all in favour? And that is carried, thank you very much. Moving on to a partial demolition of a listed heritage property at 160 Gare Fraxa Street in Fergus, and I will turn it over to Marianna, our senior planner. Welcome, Marianna.
Thank you, Mary Linton. Through you, two members of council. This is for a partial demolition at the listed heritage property, municipally known as 160 Gare Fraxa Street West in Fergus. The demolition request is for a single-car detached garage, and it is, as I said, a listed heritage property, but the value of the listing was not, did not include the garage. The Heritage Committee considered the matter on March 9th at its meeting and had no objections to the removal of the garage. The reason it's being removed is because it's in poor structural condition, and the owners intend not to replace it, but rather to have a greater amenity area in their rear yard. So the committee did not object to the demolition, and staff recommends that council not object to the demolition as well. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you, Marianna. Any questions from council, please? Councillor Foster?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Marianna, for your report. My question, Marianna. I guess basically, for the benefit of the, for Carl and Eliana, what, is there any additional steps a homeowner might need to take, given that this garage is in the, first of all, it's made of wood, and secondly, it's located smack in the middle of the termite area? Are there any additional steps that are required in terms of disposal of the remnants of the garage in order to prevent the spread of termites?
Thank you, through you. I think I will defer to our chief building official to comment on that.
Is the chief building official, oh, he is here. Hi, Randy, do you want to speak to that?
Through you, Mary Linton. Knowing that it's in the termite management area, when we, they will in fact need a permit, a building permit, to demolish the structure. And as part of that process, we have additional conditions that we put on the permit as to how it is disposed, that being a Ministry of the Environment-approved site that will take that waste. So, yeah, yeah, we're aware of the location, and through the permit process, we would deal with any concerns with respect to termites.
Any other questions from council? Councillor Foster?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I just want to speak in favour of this application. I'm well familiar with this property, and the garage itself is not, you know, it's passed its useful life, and it's not a heritage garage. It would have been built in the 60s, I believe. And there's nothing extraordinary about the garage, and it is indeed very poor condition. So I'm in favour of this.
So I read the recommendation that the council, the township of Centre Wellington, approved the partial demolition request for the detached garage at the listed property municipally known as 160 Gare Fraxa Street West in Fergus in the township of Centre Wellington, and that the property municipally known at 160 Gare Fraxa Street West in Fergus remains on the township municipal heritage registry as a non-designated listed property, and that's moved by councillor Foster, seconded by councillor Kittriss, all in favour? And that is carried. Thanks, Marianna. Moving on to 7.5 Fergus Agro-Cultural Society Red Flag Agreement. And I'll turn it over to Dorothy Smith, our manager of community development, practical culture and tourism. That's a long name. Welcome, Dorothy.
Thank you, Mary Linton. Good afternoon. So I have in front of you a report that works with the Fergus Agricultural Society in negotiating a five-year contract for them to host the Fergus Fall Fair at the Centre Wellington Sportsplex. We meet with the board of directors to negotiate these terms, and they, because they've been around for 184 years, they are historically, culturally, and educationally a significant event for the community. And so therefore, they do get a reduction in their fees, and that's what we've negotiated with them. Their last agreement expired on December 30th of 2020. And so after all the negotiating back and forth, we have come to the agreement that is attached in our report, and staff and the board of directors support the changes to the agreement. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Dorothy. Any questions from council? Okay, I will read the recommendation that the council, the township of Centre Wellington, authorizes the head of council and the clerk to execute a lease agreement for the period of five years with the Fergus Agricultural Society for the use of the Centre Wellington Community Sportsplex Fergus facilities of the Fergus Fall Fair. Now, a mover for that, please? Councillor Foster, seconded by councillor Dunsmore, all in favour? And that is carried. Moving on to 7.6 sidewalk patio cafe and displays permit policy. With the nice weather out there, this is a timely report, so appreciate the work that was done by staff on this. And at this point, I will turn it over to Dorothy, work again. Welcome, Dorothy.
Thank you, Mary Linton, through you. So staff have been working diligently over the last few months to put together a policy to accommodate our patios and cafes in the downtown cores of Alora in Fergus. As you're aware, last year, we had to bend a lot of rules and make a lot of things happen to accommodate some additional table service for the restaurants in town. And so we allowed many things to happen last summer while we had our road closures happening, which was fantastic. But in the meantime, we all knew that we had to come up with a policy to help guide these patios and cafes that were cropping up and popping up, and we needed to have some rules and regulations in place, which is what we've done. So with the help of Rob Russell from Legislative Service, sorry, Infrastructure Services, and Pat Rutter through Economic Development, we built a team to come up with these guidelines. We used and read many, many other reports from other municipalities to help guide us with these guidelines. And so that's what we have in front of you. We're hoping to get this approved soon. We've got a lot of requests for patios wanting to open now because of good weather. And so we really need to have this policy in place, and it puts us all on the same page with our restaurants so that there's no misunderstandings. And we've had a lot of input with the BIAs on this policy as well, so they're very familiar. We haven't changed a lot of the rules from last year. We're just now putting them in writing. And we had senior management approve, go through the agreement with us as well. And so that's what you have in front of you. I highlighted some things. I don't think I read a single note off my notes, but I'm happy to answer any questions. And I believe Pat is here, and Rob might be in the background somewhere.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment to this. And then we do have a delegation that I'll refer to in a second. But firstly, a lot of work went into this. The timing for this was made even more critical because of COVID and restaurants needing to have some outdoor patio work done. So last year, the team worked really, really quickly to assist their downtowns to get patios open as fast as possible. And we want to make sure, and some really good work was done. And I know Dorothy and Rob and Pat and the whole group worked really well with our BIAs. So this is something that's been pulled together really quickly, but it's very critical to our downtown businesses. So I appreciate council having the opportunity to see it right now. We do have a delegation who is registered, Sarah. And I just want to make sure that the content of that delegation is related to patios and the patio opening. We're not talking about street closures, we're not talking about street closures, and we're not talking about the bridge. So just want to make that clear right off the top. Welcome, Sarah. And you have 10 minutes, so you don't have to take the whole time, but...
Thank you, I won't take the 10 minutes. Well, thank you, council and mayor, for all your work. I know what it's like working in politics, not when it's in a pandemic. And I know you make a lot of sacrifices with your time with your family to be here and make sure things are moving along smoothly. So I'm a new resident to Alora out of the big smoke, moved here in September. And, you know, you guys are really lucky. We do live in God's country, like what a spectacular weekend and day we've had. One of the things that I just wanted to bring to council's attention is washroom facilities on the weekends. As we all know, it's getting a lot busier with tourists coming in earlier and earlier as people are trying to get out of their concrete jungles in Toronto and see our beautiful, beautiful spot. I know that currently, there's two public washrooms in Alora. There's at Bissell and at the corner of Metcalf and Mill, that they close at 4:00 PM, whereas many of the businesses are open till 7:00. And so there's running into a bit of a health issue with respect to congregation around the public bathrooms and not respecting social distancing. And secondly, there are many people that have a long drive back to Brampton or Toronto or wherever they're from that like to use a washroom before, and with them being closed at 4:00 PM is running into a lot of additional resources and issues for local businesses. I know some people were running up carloads of people to Tim Hortons yesterday just to actually use the facility. So it's the only thing, I think, you know, really, I think the hours need to be longer, probably to sunset, perhaps some porta-potties. I know that was really worked well last year. And I know that we are kind of moving our tourist season up earlier, which is great for local businesses that have been struggling. And so I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and I thank you very much. And thank you, Carrie, for so quickly and last minute putting me on the agenda.
Yes, thanks very much, Sarah. At this point, I'll turn it over to questions of Dorothy and our staff from council, members of council, councillor McRae.
Thank you, Mary Linton. I have a few questions and comments. I guess the first one would be, what criteria would lead to the denial of a permit? I'm wondering, is it worth listing the criteria so people do not waste their money applying only to be turned down? It's referring to that application fee where 50% of it will not be returned if your application is denied. So I'm also wondering, it wasn't clear, if a person was to attend the pre-consultation meeting prior to applying, would they learn in that meeting whether or not it was worth applying? So that's my one question.
I'm going to lean on Rob to answer that, please.
Good afternoon. I'm getting a lot of double feedback. Did you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. So I got to answer for councillor McRae's question. There's, I really don't anticipate a patio not being approved at this point in time. I think it's, I think the idea is that any store owner would reach out to us, and I would go there to have a site visit and just review everything with them. It'd probably take 10 or 15 minutes of everybody's time. And at that point, I'm pretty certain it would be a yes. And at that point, they would fill out their application, and we would move forward with that. The only, the only thing that may not work is if, you know, let's say a cafe wanted to put tables out, and there wasn't enough space left on the sidewalk to accommodate the proper access for ADA. Other than that, I think, I think we'll be just fine.
Okay, I just want to make sure if there's a chance for people not to lose some money, especially during these difficult times, I'd like them to have that opportunity. My second question is I have some concerns regarding the policy being limited to only addressing noise and music issues if impacting abutting property owners. We have tenants living in the adjacent buildings who, although not owners, should have rights as well. So I'm concerned that the policy does not address the fact that noise will travel and impact people who may not necessarily be the building owners. The other concern I have is that noise doesn't always travel in a direct line. So it may not be a problem next door, but maybe across the street or further, further away from the site. So I'm just wondering if maybe the policy could be slightly, or the wording could be changed slightly to reflect that.
I'll just jump in, and Rob and Pat, feel free to join me. We addressed the noise bylaw. The noise bylaw for the municipality is at 11 o'clock. And so for our patios, we made the decision we would shut them down at 10 o'clock, which is an hour prior to the noise bylaw. Last year, I can't think of any noise complaints that came in because everyone was so diligent about shutting down their patios. There may have, maybe one, I can't recall, but very, very limited. And everyone really complied to the rules last year because they don't want to see any, they don't want to put their businesses in jeopardy by us shutting them down. So I think that's why we decided to keep it to 10 o'clock this year, because we knew it worked for us last year. So I hope that helps to answer your question.
Thank you, Dorothy. Yeah, no, it's great that it's limited to 10 o'clock. I'm just thinking, if you could change the wording to not just say property owners, but tenants as well. Because being in Ward 1, I've had numerous complaints, concerns from tenants who live in the area where a lot of our pubs are located, who have issues with noise. Some of them have to be up early in the morning, working. So for them, they're going to bed earlier than, say, even 10 o'clock at night. So it's just having something there that we can always go and say to the pub owner, whoever, excuse me, could you please keep the noise down? Because we do have tenants in the area who do get up early in the morning. So just to have that wording changed, so it gives us a little bit more leeway in leaning against a pub owner saying, look, calm it down.
And also, I don't see that being a problem at all. That's, that's an easy fix.
Okay, and then also too, if maybe we didn't have it saying the abutting property? Because noise has a unique way of traveling where it won't impact the person next door, but will impact further down. I mean, for example, Riverfest. I live far away from Riverfest downtown, but when the wind blows, I can hear it just as if I was sitting right outside the door.
Those could be changed. Maybe a term like neighboring instead of abutting.
That, that, that works. I'll write that down.
Councillor Dunsmore?
Yeah, first of all, thanks for putting this together so quickly, guys. And I know that the Economic Development Committee would be happy with this. I like the part about we're waiving fees for 2021. But I want to be clear that we're waiving the fees for the permit. We're not waiving the insurance responsibilities. Because I'm really concerned for residents, if you're on these patios and there's alcohol involved, et cetera, that the township isn't on the hook for accidents and so forth that occur on there. So we are forcing them, when they do this, permits free, we'll waive those fees, but they have to have insurance, correct?
Absolutely correct. In fact, when the question was asked about what could deny an application? Well, if they don't, if they don't give us proof of insurance, naming the township as additional insured, that would be enough right there. So absolutely, this is only for the permit fees that we're asking to waive for this year, to help, to help both our businesses.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to thank all the staff for putting forward this policy for the patios. I have a question just for Dorothy. I was wondering if the tents, where, you know, like you just sort of spring them out and have a covering over the hole, whether they'd be allowed in the policy here? They're kind of like eight by eight, or 10 by 10, or 10 by 12. You can get them at Walmart, they're really... You can get them at Walmart, they're they're really cheap. And I was just wondering as a covering, rather than just an umbrella, um whether that would be allowed?
Rob can confirm this, but um we are allowing um shade structures and I think that would be considered one. I believe there was a couple restaurants that had them on the roadways last year during the road closures uh to give their patrons some shade. Um I know we're not looking for anything permanent attached, so I would think this would be all right. Rob, can you confirm that?
Uh yes, Dorothy, you are correct, we are allowing uh structures, yeah.
Andy?
Just one clarification, we did have uh just one clarification, uh there are building code regulations with regards to structures adjacent to buildings. Um so we did have one discussion with a property owner last year. Um so that's the only place where we would have to uh with regards to uh building code. Uh but as Dorothy says, we have allowed them in the majority of locations. It was just one where they wanted to go more from a permanent, a from a temporary to a permanent roof structure and we could not allow that.
You have the Michaeling?
Sorry, did you say my name Kelly?
Yes, I did, sorry.
I really do have trouble hearing you for some reason, everybody else is clear, but I have, I always have trouble hearing you. Um so thank you, I I had a couple of questions, uh one of them, I know you're foregoing any fees this year, but uh for patios at least, this, there have never been fees. Do we have a fee structure in place for this or um how does that? What are the fees going to be for future years?
We're proposing.
Sorry, it is in the report, just for the other councillors to know, um but Dorothy, you can, you can.
Oh, I didn't see it, I looked through there and I didn't see it.
Yeah, we're proposing two hundred and fifty dollars per permit.
Okay. Um second question was kind of following up to a little bit of what Sarah was talking about. Um and and she was referring to the washrooms, which is absolutely a problem. Has last year, the lineup used to be right across over to Getty Street from the wa- public washrooms on Mill Street, so. And it um this year, apparently the county and the township of both not agreed to allow uh the bridge to be closed, the the new bridge. So it's going to be full-time traffic around that corner. Whereas it has no traffic up above on the rest of Metcalf Street and West Mill, which is going to create some pretty major uh threats to uh to uh to anyone trying to cross the street at Mill and Geddes, or Mill and uh Metcalf. Uh that's, that's all, uh even when the streets are all going, that's a very dangerous corner. So um it's a major concern for the, for the business owners and number one for safety, but number two, just there, there's not going to be any distancing there or if there is, people will sit at the, at the traffic light. It'll, it'll go through three changes before anybody moves because the street, the light is just, by the time people walk across, there's no time left. I it's a, it's a really very, very dangerous corner. I and uh so I I hope that there's going to be some adjustments made in the lights or something to make that a le- less dangerous for for pedestrian.
Yeah, just a quick update, um there was a meeting between the Fergus, sorry, the Alora B I A and the county and the township. Um and uh we are committed, uh the county and the town will be working together to uh make sure that that intersection is safe as possible. Again, um not really related to sidewalk patio um that we're talking about right now, but I just wanted to let uh let um councillors know that that is something that we're committed to um making sure that there is safety there in downtown. You have the Foster?
Thank you, uh thank you, Mayor. My question, I think, will be for Dorothy Smith. Dorothy, I I just wondered uh in terms of the uh the liquor, the liquor regulatory authority, the L C B O or the L L B O, are there any implications for licensees? Um you know, are there any compliance issues if you're a restaurant operator? Do you have to have a certain type, or are there any licensing implications if you're a restaurant in downtown Alora, downtown Fergus, but you don't yet have a a formal patio permit from the L C B O? I I'm sure you've looked at this Dorothy, maybe you could explain that to me? If if indeed there are any regulatory issues from the liquor authority in Ontario, if suddenly you want to start operating a patio where liquor is served? Any, any comments, Dorothy?
Yeah, so they allowed an extension of an existing um permit. So if a restaurant had an L C B O license to serve in their establishment, they would allow them to extend it onto the sidewalk. But of course, they had to meet um, you know, our regulations about um fencing and and things of that nature. So yes, we worked very closely with the A G C O all last summer. And uh I I personally work closely with them myself. And so yes, we have all that covered as well.
Thank you, Dorothy, that's good, I thought so.
Council Van Loon?
Hey, yeah, no, I I have no questions, I just a comment, I think this is great to get going, especially having the sunshine out and uh we need to do what we can to help these restaurants. So I'm glad to see you come, thanks Dorothy.
Great, I will read the recommendation that the council of the town to the center of Washington approved the sidewalk patio sidewalk. Move order. What's the point of order, Council Kittrick?
I have another question.
I'm going to get the the motion on the table, then I'll I'll ask for further questions. A recommendation to the council of the town to the center of Washington approve the sidewalk patio sidewalk cafe and sidewalk display policy that allows for the establishment of patios, cafes and displays on public space and that council waived the fees associated with this policy for twenty twenty one and weather permitting, allow the start of the twenty twenty one season to open earlier than the stated date of May first to assist local businesses in recovering from the pandemic. Have a mover for that, please? Council Dunsmore, seconded by Council McCray, any further comments? Council Kittrick?
Uh thank you, Mayor. It hasn't been addressed right now and I'm wondering if um the patio um there were stipulations in the beginning of the discussion that we wouldn't talk about East Mill Street closure. But I'm wondering whether um this policy by being connected to that is discriminatory towards uh those businesses that are on East Mill Street?
Yeah, this, this uh policy is for all center Wellington, so uh there is no, no difference made. This is for Fergus, this is for Laura, this is for anywhere in center Wellington. Making sure that we have a consistent policy when it comes to cafes, patios and displays across center Wellington. So um that's what this policy is, a consistent policy. Any other questions from council? Okay, all in favor? And that is Carrie, thank you very much. Moving on to seven point seven, Graham Parkland Development Agreement. And we have a report from our managing director of community services, Pat Nathan. Welcome, Pat.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. I'd like to present the report on the Graham Park Parkland Development Project. Uh Taylor McDaniel uh was representing the developers, but unfortunately had to attend another meeting. So he's unable to be with us here today. Um some background, the Graham Park is located at thirteen Douglas and it's adjacent to eleven Douglas Street. And Taylor McDaniel um and his group are the developers of eleven Douglas Street, which has been recently redeveloped as a twenty seven unit building, which is adjacent to that parkland. The developer approached the township with a desire to contribute to the improvements of Graham Park. This is uh, this was timely because the township was already scheduled to replace the playground structure, which is at end of life. So township staff and the developer have worked together to plan for the redevelopment of Graham Park and established an agreement to reflect the plans of the park, the costs, who's paying for what and the role of the township and the developer in the project. That agreement is being presented today for council's consideration and was prepared and reviewed by the township solicitor. Graham Park is somewhat landlocked uh by residential properties. And so as part of the discussions, the developer has agreed to an easement agreement on eleven Douglas Street to provide ongoing access to the park for park maintenance vehicles. And that agreement is also part of this report to be considered by council. Included in the agreement um is the regrading of Graham Parkland to benefit the developer to be able to remove a retaining wall between the two properties. This is a partnership between this developer and the township that will benefit the residents of the area and the township. And the developer is under no obligation to provide this contribution to the park. The new park will include new playground equipment and surfacing, shade structure, paths around the playground and through the park, improved signage and new plantings. The work will occur in twenty twenty one and a concept drawing is attached to the parkland agreement. The project budget is attached to the agreement and the township budget of fifty thousand was already in the playground replacement um schedule and estimated costs are just under that fifty thousand. And the developer costs are fifty nine thousand five hundred and ninety four dollars plus the shade structure, which they plan to source separately and deliver to site. Although Taylor could not be here, I can share that he has reviewed the agreement and the easement agreement and is supportive of signing these. And he also supports um improving access to the grounds of the park through his property with better signage. He's hopeful that if council approves this agreement, once the park is opened, we can have a media release and a photo op with mayor and councillors at that time to celebrate the good news and share the improvements of the park. That's the report, thank you, uh if anyone has any questions.
Thanks very much, Pat, and uh just to let people know that uh Taylor McDaniel, um this is nothing that his, his company is required to do, um this is something he has chosen to do. So I I wish he was here in person and we could thank him in person, but um I I hope that Pat, you can extend our thanks uh to him. Um because this is great that we have uh corporate citizens who want to make a difference uh in the quality of our neighborhoods, even when they're not required to. Please extend that to him, questions from council? Council Foster?
Thank you, Mayor, um thank you, Pat, for your report. Um Pat, I visited the site uh over the weekend and I see um the retaining wall has already been removed and the grading has already been done. And and it seems that we're being asked to approve this work, yet it's already largely uh complete uh with the exception of the new playground and the gazebo. Can you help me understand, Pat? Um why is the work already underway? And more importantly, is the developer um doing this work in lieu of any other obligations uh such as a a parkland or or otherwise?
Yeah, go ahead, Pat.
Thank you, so um if you remember, uh we uh over the summer, we came to council and we ran into a bit of a problem with the ownership of Graham Park. And that had to be resolved before we could bring this parkland development agreement forward to council for consideration. So it's my understanding that yes, the grading did get completed and the wall was removed. However, if uh council does not uh want to proceed with this agreement, then we would require that the developer replace the wall and return the grading back to its original state. Um so yes, it has been done, but it can be reversed if required by council. And uh we're recognizing that in the agreement that this was done, but uh it was verbally agreed to, but not officially given permission to start it. But Taylor had his equipment and was doing his grading at the time, so he proceeded to do that as we were delayed in bringing this agreement to council.
Council Foster?
Well, I guess it begs the question, Pat. Testing, audio test, thank you. It begs the question, Pat, we're being asked to agree to start new work, yet the work's already been uh not only started, but largely complete, that there's a, there's a bit of curiosity there. If, you know, we've, in your report, you told us this work was about to be started, yet it's already largely complete. I just find that a little perplexing at the very least.
Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to Andy, I think someone's getting lost with the translation there, Andy?
Thank you, Mary Lynn, as Pat has explained, uh we did report to council uh with regards to the uh property ownership uh situation and also had other discussions. Uh that was all verbal, uh it was communicated to council. Unfortunately, due to land issue, uh the old ownership, uh which goes back into the seventies and eighties, need to be cleaned up in order that we could register this on the agreement. Um Taylor was very uh understanding the fact that uh if council so wishes to not approve this today, that he would uh turn the conditions back to pre approval stage. Uh and he took that risk uh proceeding uh with the fact that uh this still would be coming to council. So council was made aware verbally by Pat in a previous discussion. Uh and that's how we proceeded, uh recognizing that uh we did clarify to council that this is why uh we were coming forward in the previous discussion.
Council Dunsmore?
No, I have no, no questions, I just want to say thank you uh to the builder for doing this and upgrading one of our parks. They're putting in more money than we are. I do remember that discussion clearly uh that we had regarding the, the ownership and stuff. And and uh this isn't a surprise to me at all and I'm happy it's being done. And I'm glad somebody else is footing the major portion of the bill.
Any, any other from council, Council Kittrick?
Uh thank you, Mayor. Um I guess I'd like to have clarification from uh the planning department policy. When a developer does a high story uh development, um do they, do they still have to do a parkland commitment, like in pay fu- funds? Or is that waived or is it just, like, how does that work? And maybe uh, you know, like when you do a subdivision and you have a lot of single houses, um there's a parkland thing, but but for a a a single structure with a vertical thing, the parkland is there, is there part land requirement for that, is it different?
Uh well, the different, the difference in this case is this property before this building was built had an apartment on it. And it was removed on the exact same parcel of land and rebuilt. It's got more units in it, but it was a reconstructed apartment. So it didn't go through um any kind of like a subdivision, as you're alluding to. We have the, the authority to acquire land to be uh dedicated in a new subdivision. Uh but this was a replacement of a building on the same property. Um so presumably the, you know, the the theory is the Graham Park, when it was, when that lot was created years ago, that was the dedication of park for that development area. And uh so we don't really have authority to take more land uh at this subsequent stage. Certainly would not have included um any obligation on the developer to actually build any park facility.
Any other questions from council? You have the picture? Council Kittrick, you're on mute.
Can you hear me now? Thank you, Mayor. Um a- as we move towards more density and we have more uh vertical structures and adding more uh units, um I think there's a little bit, maybe we need our park policy uh uh allocation revised because um obviously the, the park that did in the, in the past was for a certain number of units. And then now in the future, there may be twice, three times the number, the park is smaller. So is there um, is the park allocation policy going to be maybe reviewed to council um to accommodate those changes? to council to accommodate those changes?
Yeah, I think that's part of the, the planning act, and I don't think that's what we're talking about today. We're talking about a very specific agreement for a very specific park. Anything else from council? Is it, is it new, Council Foster? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. My question to the C O, Andy, the defect on the park title does not justify or change the fact that we have a report and a senior member of staff has given us a report asking us to approve the start of work. Yet it turns out over the weekend, the work is already largely started. You can't use the, the defect on the park title to justify that. Can you, can you please explain to me why we're being asked to approve work, yet the work has already been largely not only started, but almost completed? This is a procedural matter, Andy, that, that doesn't square up here. Are we being misled?
Sorry, I'm going to answer the question because already Pat has answered it, now Andy's answered it. And I know the answer, and I think everybody else on the council knows the answer. It's been very clear that the developer is first of all doing us a favor. And secondly, has indicated that if council doesn't approve it, that they would remove their improvements to the state it was before the agreement. So I don't know what other information you're requiring from staff, because staff have answered this on numerous occasions already. So I'm not going to require that they provide the exact same answer again. I'll read the recommendation of the council. The township of Centre Wellington authorized the mayor and clerk to execute a park development agreement between the township and Taylor McDaniel, Clark McDaniel, then Jennifer, Jennifer Mochrie, the developer for Graham Park thirteen Douglas Street, Fergus. And that council, the township of Centre Wellington, delegate authority to Andrew Goldie, C O, to sign the forthcoming acknowledgement and direction authorizing the registration of easement on title to eleven Douglas Street in the form enclosed, subject to any minor revisions that may be requested by the owner and deemed appropriate by the township solicitor. I have a mover for that recommendation, please. Council Dunmore, second by Council McRae, all in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. That's a good news story, by the way. Moving on to seven point eight municipal flag policy. And we have a report from our chief administration official, Andrew Goldie.
Thank you, Mayor Lynton. This is a, a, a new policy with regards to flags flying in Centre Wellington. Over the years, we followed the protocol from Heritage Canada with regards to raising and lowering our flags in Centre Wellington and have not allowed any other community organizations to fly their flag. We've had more and more requests for that in the community over the last several years. And I know even some of the councillors have brought for some of those requests. So staff have researched and looked at and spoken to other municipalities that have moved forward in allowing community flags being risen at, flown at their facilities. And the direction that many are now going to is having a community flag pole in their community, whereby that flag, that pole would be the only one that would have the community flag being flown and setting out specific criteria. So we've reviewed a number of different policies throughout southern Ontario with municipalities. And the policy you see before you is sort of best practices of, of criteria for the raising and lowering of the flag for various individuals. And then also setting out criteria with regards to the flag being, the community flag pole being designated at the Alora Green space in order to have a community flag recognition. We are looking at this as a one-year pilot in order to see how the program goes. And if there's any future request for a flag pole in Fergus. But we felt we would start first with the, the one flag pole in Alora. The policy lays out the various criteria for those community groups, the process and the timing, as well as the various conditions for raising, lowering the Canadian provincial and Centre Wellington flag at half mast. Like I say, this would be something that would be new, based on what we're seeing in other communities, the best practices, and also starting to recognize community organizations and various international, national celebrations with the community, the community flag pole and Alora. So I'd be happy to answer any questions with regards to the proposed policy that we see as a one-year pilot. And then we would bring back anything after the one year to see if there's any additional changes we need to make or additional flag pole in Fergus. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Questions, comments from council? Second with Council Foster?
Well, thank you, Mayor. No, no questions.
Councilor Van Loon?
No questions. I like the simplicity of it.
Council McQuaid?
Mayor, just thanks, Sandy, for getting this through. You've moved fairly quickly on this and I appreciate that.
Council Kitcher?
No questions?
Council Dunmore?
Yeah, no, I just think it's a really good idea and I'm hoping that after a year, we can do something similar over here in Fergus. So that's good work.
Council McRae?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. My first question is regarding the half-masting of flags. Why are other first responders like ambulance attendants, paramedics, firefighters, who may die in the line of duty not included?
Through you, Mayor Lynton. In many of the, so firefighters are included as they are employees. So they are part of our organization. So any firefighter dies in line of duty locally would be recognized under half-massing. Many of the documents that we reviewed did not include paramedics in regards, or ambulance drivers, as it's not typical where they're dying in the line of duty, based on their risk versus police and fire. So that's where many municipalities did not include them. If that's something that we want to review after a year, we'd be open to that. So that is why we did not include them, but we have included firefighters.
Okay. My second question, and this is related to the C O determining when the flag may be half-masted for the death of someone else. How do we ensure consistency of approach unless you're left open to legal attack because someone felt that someone should have been recognized who wasn't?
Yeah, thank you for the question. It is our intent specifically even through the first year is that we would be abiding by all the criteria for the half-massing. We do not see alternates coming to that. If we do have more requests through this year, then that'd be something we'd report back and look for clarification for additional criteria.
Okay, I'll read the recommendation of the council of Centre of the Centre Wellington, adopt a municipal flag policy as attached to report C O twenty twenty-one dot zero four of the chief administrative officer dated March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Mover for that, please. Council Dunmore, second by Council Foster, all in favor? And that is carried. Moving on to section eight, we have a number of information items. Ten information items, and I will just leave that up to, I'll go around the room and see if there's any questions on all, any of those eight. Council McRae, any questions in those, those information items?
Thank you, Mayor Lynton. Just one, related to the treasurer's annual statement, twenty twenty investments. What is the general opinion of other municipalities' treasurers? Are they in favor or opposed?
Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Lynton. I'm assuming, Council McRae, you're referring to the prudent investor standard?
It's here. It's where, it's in response to the K P M G study where they're suggesting maybe a pooling of all investments?
Yes, yes. Thank you for the clarification. Yes, the, the treasures in Wellington County are generally in agreement that it would make a lot of sense from a efficiency point of view and from a prudent investor perspective for us to discuss a, a joint approach to investments. We just haven't had an opportunity to this point to, to collaborate on that. So it's something we want to do in the near future.
Thank you.
Council Dunmore?
I have a few questions. My first question is for the C O's report. And I'm wondering if he could clarify, since he's the authority designated in April for municipality, if he could clarify about the vaccination. I get a lot of people asking me, is it a vaccination or is it a experimental gene therapy? And I just don't really know. So I'm wondering if he could answer that.
Thank you through Mayor Lynton. I'm not the health expert. My suggestion is that that question should be going to Wellington, Duffin, Guelph, Public Health.
Follow-up question, Council Kitcher?
My next question is for the Economic Development Task Task Force. And it's basically asking the mayor, the councillor Neil Dunmore and councillor Steve Van Loon if the minutes are correct. I wasn't at the meeting and I'm just wondering if they're correct from them.
The minutes have been adopted by the committee. So they're front of the council after being adopted by the committee. So you're getting at something. I'm not sure what it is. So, Council Dunmore, do you have anything to add to that?
I was just going to announce that the committee approved the minutes before they came to council and nobody saw any irregularities.
Council Van Loon, did you want to make a comment about?
Yeah, no, I, I would just rather ask Council Kitcher, is there something that he sees out of place or the, or has a question on it? I think the discussion or question is worthwhile asking.
Thank you, Council Van Loon. I'm just wondering if the declared conflict of interest wa- is accurate?
Yeah, sorry, that's, that's not for this body to say. I mean, conflict of interest is, again, we've mentioned this already today. And I don't know what the fixation is with conflict of interest today, but every, every member of every committee and town council has to go through a conflict of interest, community area interest before every meeting, and they do that. So I'm not sure, that, that's been, whatever's been declared is what's been declared. If there's nothing that's been declared, it hasn't been declared. So there's nothing really to talk about. Any other questions? Council Kitcher?
On the tracking list, the community well-being and neighborhood hospitality task force motion that I had done before in January is now coming up. And I'm wondering, who do I submit the revisions to so that the council can see them before the meeting? Because I wasn't really, it was kind of deferred for two months, but I wasn't really clear to me who I send those to, because there were a lot of comments on it, and then I've made some revisions. But I would like to circulate it legally, so I want to know what I do there.
Yeah, legally is good. Send it to the clerk.
Okay.
Before noon on Wednesday of the, of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Oh, we're going around the room. Council McQuaid, sorry about that. Council McQuaid?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, my question has to do with the delegation of authority report. And it's more, I'm just wondering if it would be possible for future years, because it's a little late for this year, but for future years, if there can be a dollar amount in, included with the report. I mean, if I look at, for instance, that, well, right now I'm on the software and service agreement page. I have no idea if us know what those line items equal in dollars. And, and some of them are probably pretty major, so it'd be nice to know what, what we're delegating exactly. So if we could include a dollar amount with those line items, it would be very useful.
Andy?
Yeah, through you, Mayor Lynton. All of those expenditures would be part of the budget, the approved budget that council approves each year. So staff are not going to be in, beyond any of the authority within, allocated in the budget.
Council McQuaid?
Thanks, Mayor. Yes, I understand that as a whole, Andy, but as a line item, they're not included in the budget. They're included as software updates or something of that nature, but they're not line item by line item. So that's why I'm asking the question.
Council Van Loon?
Thanks, Mayor. No, I don't have any questions. I'm just wondering, like, is, Council McQuaid, are you asking for the maximum amount that they're allowed to spend within their authority? Or, I don't, I don't want to get too far off, but I don't have any questions otherwise. Thanks.
No, I'm not. I'm just curious, you know, if you look at, at different line items in there and maintenance on products, et cetera, et cetera, or whatever, you know, there's a bunch of different things in there that probably add up to some significant dollars. And if we just saw a, a dollar amount, I mean, there, there's, we could go and ask for it and be given the information if, but if it was included in the report, it would be simpler for everybody. That's all. It's, it's, I'm not asking for anything that you don't have, so just include it in the report so that we all have it.
Yeah, see, I would, and Andy can correct me if I'm wrong. That's an operational detail that I don't know why it would come to council, but it's easy to put there. I don't see any challenge. Dan, do you have anything to add?
No, nothing really to add. It's, like you said, it's something that, it's at a level of detail we typically don't bring to council, but it's something we could add in if we had to.
Council Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I don't have any questions, but I just want to, I agree with Council McQuaid. And that's very common practice with the government of Canada. Very clear statement, when you delegate spending authorities, how much exactly does each level, the, the delegatee have? And it's quite a simple matter to present it in a matrix, based on your position, what your delegated level of authority is, if and when it's delegated. So it's, it's very practiced with the government of Canada. There's no reason not to do it here. And, and Mayor, to your point about operational, it's, it's actually a policy matter, because our, our duty is to provide oversight to the, and the financial well-being of the municipality. And that's exactly what Council McQuaid is doing.
If council has anything else from council? I have a motion to adjourn. Council Kitcher, second by Council Dunmore, all in favor? And we are adjourned. Have a great rest of the day.